You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the May 13th, 2025 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education Meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair. I appreciate your attendance and I say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Our inspirational quote for tonight is by Dr. Seuss, and this is for our students as they leave the class this year and they go home for the summer. I want them to always remember, "You are braver than you believe, stronger than you seem, and smarter than you think." May we have a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Thank you, Board Member Miller. Our first order of business tonight is the Agenda Review. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Thank you. That is unanimous. Our next exciting order of business is our student performance. Please welcome the Reynolds High School Theater.
Good evening, everyone. Before we begin, I want to thank a few people who work behind the scenes every time we have a meeting to make these student performances possible. That's Ms. Lisa Sugg, Zach TJ James, Chris Runge, Kevin Renn, and Kevin Sherrill. We appreciate all that you guys do to get this done for our students. This evening's performers represent the tremendously successful RJ Reynolds Theater cast of Haiti's Town, under the direction of Mr. Nick Zayas. Tonight's cast includes The Fates, performed by Lily Green, graduating senior, who will be attending Davis and College, Sophia Pisapia, graduating senior, also attending Davis and College, Nyla Lee, rising senior, who is the president of the Reynolds Social Activists Club, We the People. You will also see Eurydice, who's going to be performed by Campbell Dean, another rising senior, accepted to UNC School of the Arts, and a top-10 finalist for Best Actress at the Durham Performing Arts Center for her role as Eurydice. Their performance selections are "Nothing Changes" and "When the Chips Are Down." Ladies and gentlemen, Reynolds High School Theater.
Why the struggle, why the strain? Why make trouble, why make scenes? Why go against the grain? Why swim upstream? It ain't, it ain't, it ain't no use. You're bound, you're bound, you're bound to lose. What's done, what's done, what's done is done. That's the way the river runs. So, why get wet? Why break a sweat? Why waste your precious breath? Why beat your handsome brow? Nothing changes. Nothing changes. Life ain't easy.
Life ain't fair.
A girl's gotta fight for her right.
Full share.
What you gonna do when the chips are down? Now that the chips are down. What you gonna do when the chips are down? Now that the chips are down. Help yourself.
Heck with the rest.
Even the ones who love you best. What you gonna do when the chips are down? Now that the chips are down. What you gonna do when the chips are down? Now that the chips are down. My aching heart. What you gonna do when the chips are down? Now that the chips are down. Take what you can.
If you must.
Ain't nobody but yourself to trust. What you gonna do when the chips are down? Now that the chips are down. What you gonna do when the chips are down? Now that the chips are down. Aim for the heart.
Show the drill.
If you don't do it, then the other one will. What you gonna do when the chips are down? Now that the chips are down. What you gonna do when the chips are down? Now that the chips are down. And the first shall be first. And the last shall be last. Cast your eyes to heaven. You get a knife in the back. Nobody's righteous. Nobody's proud. Nobody's innocent. Now that the chips are down. Now, 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 the chips are down.
Are there family members in the audience to stand and supporters that we can also give you all a round of applause? Yes, Principal Freeman? That was wonderful. So, we are moving to special recognitions. First, Kim Paluso, our Executive Director of Staffing and Benefits, will present the Teacher Appreciation Proclamation. You want to do that first? Because I have a lot of folks. Come on. Okay. Chris is going to do it.
Good evening. Kim's under the weather today, so I'm a pinch-hitting for her since it's baseball season. So, good evening Chair Kaplan, Vice Chairman Hanis, Superintendent McManus. Our school system, along with many school systems, celebrated teacher appreciation last week. As a follow-up to many recognitions last week across our district, the district wishes to publicly offer endless gratitude and thankfulness to our 4,000-plus teachers and licensed professionals. They go beyond the duty every day in the classroom, hallways, cafeteria, gymnasium, in the community, in Walmart, telling kids to, you know, walk with their walking feet, and just always being an outstanding role model for our children, which makes lifelong learners and successful citizens. So, on behalf of our school system, we proudly offer this posted Teacher Appreciation Proclamation and say thank you to all of our teachers for all that you do. I would ask any of our teachers here with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools to please stand to be recognized.
Thank you. Next, Kenya Rocker, our District Lead High School Counselor, will recognize the flagship scholarships, Military Academy Appointments, and Military Enlistments.
Good evening. Get ready to keep those hands a-clapping. I am Kenya Rocker, the District Lead High School Counselor, and I am here to recognize some amazing students for being the recipients of some of our most selective local, state, and national scholarships. So, thank you to Superintendent McManus and our school board for allowing me this time. First, I would like to acknowledge that this is our first class to go through four years of high school following the pandemic. So, these students were online in eighth grade, minus the socialization they were used to, and then they entered the oh-so-scary world of high school. And we are so proud of their growth and their resilience that they have shown, and I want you to know that as a whole, this class of 2025 has garnered over $85 million in scholarships this year. That deserves clapping. So, I'd like to begin tonight by recognizing a student for an accomplishment that we rarely witness. We all know the importance of good attendance to academic success. Well, this year, we have a student who has not only had perfect attendance throughout high school, he has had perfect attendance from kindergarten through 12th grade. Please join me in applauding Alexander Todd from Reagan High School for his dedication. And parents, if you are here, please stand because we know that takes family dedication as well. Thank you so much. She didn't even get that fake cough. Didn't work. All right. The next three scholarships that I will recognize provide full funding at UNC System four-year public universities where they are issued. They also provide summer enrichment experiences, extensive networking opportunities, as well as international travel and study abroad experiences. So, these scholarships amount to more than $100,000. This year, we are proud to have five winners of the prestigious Morehead Kane Scholarship. The Morehead Kane is the first merit scholarship program in the United States founded at the nation's first public university, the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. To be selected for the Morehead Kane, students must demonstrate moral force of character, scholarship, leadership, and physical vigor. High schools are allowed to nominate a limited number of students based on size, and applicants go through a rigorous screening process. Tonight, we have with us, well, Ariel Aduba from North Forsyth High School is not here, but tell you how dedicated our staff is. Ms. Jessica Russell, her testing coordinator at Parkland High School showed up to represent her, I'm sorry, North Forsyth High School, showed up to, in her place. So, we have Ariel Aduba. Benz Burton of Reagan High School. And we have three recipients that could not make it tonight. Sloan Wallen from Mount Tabor High School, who may have a grandparent here. Please stand up. Thank you. Lilly Zacks from Reynolds High School and Cora Harfield from Reynolds High School also were not able to attend. We know these students are involved in so many activities, so they are out at games and trainings and all kinds of things. The next scholars that I would like to honor have earned the Park Scholarship at North Carolina State University. This scholarship is based on outstanding accomplishments in scholarship, leadership, character, and service. And just as the Morehead Kane, students are, I mean, schools are allowed to nominate a limited number of students for this scholarship as well. Along with summer experiences, the Park Scholarship also seeks to provide research projects, service activities, and conferences around the United States and abroad. And this year, we have two winners of the Park Scholarship. Ms. Grace Galen of Reagan High School. And Alicia Reynolds Welch of Early College of Forsyth. We have also a scholar who earned the Cheetum White Scholarship, which is a fully funded scholarship at North Carolina A&amp;T State University. Would just like to recognize this student who is not here, Amari Johnson of Parkland High School. We are very glad to have some scholars from the National Merit Scholarship Program that's been around since 1955. And students are entered in the competition of the National Merit Scholarship by taking the PSA-T in their 11th grade year. Currently, over 1.5 million students in about 21,000 high schools enter the competition. Some 50,000 entrants qualify for program recognition. Then, this number is narrowed to 15,000 finalists. And then, approximately 7,200 outstanding students from around the nation receive a scholarship for college undergraduate studies. So, we are proud to honor our National Merit finalists, Max Draezel of Atkins High School. And we have three National Merit Scholarship Awardees. Kaitlin Lowe of Atkins High School. Benjamin Grimstead of Mount Tabor High School. And Vardam Ramanathan of Atkins High School. We also have Henry Johnson, who was not able to join us from Forsyth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Kaitlin Lowe from Reagan High School. My fault. Congratulations to these students.
They want you to shake hands. Are y'all shaking hands?
The next group that I am very pleased to honor, as they join us on the stage, are students who have Military Academy Appointments, JROTC Scholarships, or have enlisted in the U.S. Military. So, if you all will join me on stage. So, we are pleased to have our United States Military Academy Appointments. We honor these students for both their scholarship and their commitment to serve in our country. These students had to attain a nomination from a member of Congress or state senator for appointment. They also participated in one of the most extensive screening processes of graduating high school seniors. These Military Academy Appointments offer students a fully funded prestigious four-year academic, physical, and mental education that develops personal character, leads to a Bachelor of Science, guarantees employment as a trusted leader, and employs students in a respectful and rewarding profession as an officer. These scholarships are all, these military appointments and scholarships are all valued over $200,000. Reese Daley could not be with us tonight, but his lovely mother is representing him, Tara Daley, and he received an appointment to the United States Air Force Academy. Garrison Dibble of Atkins High School received an appointment to the United States Naval Academy. And Jack Harrison of West Forsyth received three Military Academy Appointments. I've never seen this in 29 years. Two, the Merchant Marines Academy, the U.S. Air Force Academy, but he is going to the United States Naval Academy. Go Navy, beat Army. Additionally, he also received a Naval Reserve Officer Training Corps Scholarship for Navy. So, congratulations to Jack. Next, I would like to recognize a student who received a very special national award in Army JROTC, the 2025 Army JROTC Three Par National Championship. And this is a civilian marksmanship program. She entered this program amongst 1,800 other people. She had to send in her marksmanship scores and entered at 13th. She placed eighth in the competition, which ranks her 24th nationally out of all Army JROTC Cadets and Air Rifle in the nation. And 76th in the nation out of all JROTC Cadets and Air Rifle regardless of branch. She was awarded a new Crossman Challenger Air Rifle as a part of her award, and this is Ella Goodman from Atkins High School. We would also like to honor our students who have received three or four-year JROTC Scholarships. So, in exchange for a career serving in the Military ROTC Scholarships, are awarded based on academic achievements and can be applied to any of 1,000-plus participating colleges and universities, covering either tuition and fees or room and board. Additionally, these students receive help to offset living expenses and book costs. So, all ROTC Scholarships include at least an extra $420 each month toward expenses, along with $1,200 each year to spend on books. So, congratulations. Tonight, we have with us Caleb Hargreaves from Reagan High School. Emerson Austin of West Forsyth also received that scholarship, but he cannot be with us tonight. And there are several students in your program who are three- or four-year JROTC Cadets, and some of them are also waiting to hear about their JROTC Scholarships. Last but not least, we would like to honor a student, and we have several in your program listed. I think it's about 26 right now that we know of, some of whom are already in basic training. But tonight, we have with us a student who is enlisted to serve in the United States Armed Services. And so, these young people have vowed to serve, protect, and defend our country. We can't honor them enough, but we can try tonight. And so, please join me in saying thank you to Andrew Gaskins, who is enlisted in the United States Coast Guard, and he's a Waukataun High School student. Do we have any other family members of these folks? Okay. Awesome. Stand up. Thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me this time. Thank you all for being here.
Next, Karen Morse, Director of Teacher Residency, will present the Teaching Fellow Scholarship Recipient.
The North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program is a competitive, merit-based, forgivable loan program, providing tuition assistance of up to $10,000 per year, as well as unique enrichment experiences for qualified students who are committed to teaching elementary education, special education, science, technology, engineering, or math in a North Carolina public school. The purpose of the program is to recruit, prepare, and support future teachers who attend institutions of higher education in North Carolina. I am a North Carolina Teaching Fellow alum from the class of 1988 and a current Board Member of the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Advisory Board, and it is my honor and privilege to recognize Jada Richardson, a Parkland High School senior who's been awarded the North Carolina Teaching Fellow Award and will study at UNC Charlotte next year. With Jada is her teacher, Ms. Sims from Parkland. Ms. Sims is a Teacher Cadet teacher. Teacher Cadet is a program that's available at all of our high schools to be able to help high school students learn about teaching as a profession, and they actually have field experiences. Jada has had field experiences at Parkland, Conoc Elementary, and Conoc Middle, as well as shadowing her fourth-grade teacher at South Fork Elementary School. In addition to being a teaching cadet, she's active as the Student Body President. She participates in basketball and track. She is the 2024 Miss Coomba, is active in National Honor Society, is the PTSA representative, and her list of accomplishments and involvements goes on and on and on. I don't know when she sleeps. Please join me in congratulating Jada Richardson for being selected as a North Carolina Teaching Fellow Scholar and for her desire to join the best profession in the world: education. And I think you can tell, Jada, that we hope you're going to come back to Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools as a teacher when you finish.
Yes, any, are the parents or supporters in the audience to stand? Next, Lisa Nakawatsi, our Forsyth Assistant Principal Association, will present the 2025 Forsyth Assistant Principals Association Scholarship Recipients.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Nakawatsi, and I am the President of Forsyth Assistant Principals Association, or otherwise known as FAPA. Each year, our organization raises money for our scholarship fund. This year, we will be presenting an $800 scholarship to a senior at most of our high schools in the district. Each recipient submits essay transcripts, letters of recommendation, along with their application. It is my pleasure to announce the 2025 recipients. Please hold your applause until the end. Jada Johnson from- Jada Johnson from Parkland High School. Naeisha Martin, Mount Tabor High School. Anaya Edwards, East Forsyth High School. Kymar Hinkston, Middle College of Forsyth. Jahari Miller, Reynolds High School. Jaylene Siri-Lilo from Glenn High School. And Ingrid Gonzalez Chavez from Early College of Forsyth. Thank you.
And family, uh, family members and supporters, please stand. Carrots. Next, Shannon Pylent from Reagan High School will present the winners for the 2024-2025 American Association of Laboratory Animal Sciences Celebrate the Mouse Biovideo Essay Winners.
Hi, thank you so much for having us here this evening. For the sixth year in a row, Reagan High School has had students who have won the AALAS Celebrate the Mouse Contest. These students created an original video essay explaining how them, themselves, a family member, friend, or pet have benefited from medical discoveries made possible thanks to work conducted on mice and medical research. We are very fortunate this year, first place was given it, was awarded to Dominic Valeris for his project on colon cancer. And Lily Walls received third place and the fan favorite awards for her video essay on alcoholism. We're very proud of them. Um, Dominic got to go home with $500 and a trophy. Lily got to go home with $100 for each of her awards. And then Reagan, our science class, also got a check for $500 to put towards supplies. So, thank you.
And, um, parents, supporters, family members, anybody in the audience, please stand.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Eugene Mabry, the Lead Teacher of K-12 Music and Theater, will celebrate the Superior Ratings at the Music Performance Education, Adjudication, excuse me.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna be assisted this evening by, uh, my supervisor, Brad Oliver, Executive Director of Encore Learning. Music Performance Adjudication is a performance assessment for secondary band chorus and orchestra programs that provides teachers and students with feedback and a rating. MPA events in North Carolina are sponsored by either the North Carolina Music Educators Association or the North Carolina Bandmasters Association. The Superior Rating is the highest rating for MPA, equivalent to a letter grade of A on your report card. Since this would involve a huge number of students from throughout the county, we have asked the music teachers to accept recognition on behalf of their students. Uh, please hold your applause till, till the end. Tonight, we are proud to recognize the following ensembles. Up first, Diggs Latham Elementary School, receiving four superiors at solo and ensemble MPA. Their director is Ms. Tanya Allison, but the award will be received tonight by the Magnet Coordinator, Ms. Amanda Gordon. Next is Haynes Middle School, the eighth-grade advanced band, and I love this group, The Jazzin' Dragons. Their director is Ms. Mary Catherine Bowman-Chode, who happens to be a former band student of Mr. Oliver. Next on our list, Mount Tabor High School Wind Ensemble, under the direction of the wonderful Ms. Rebecca Sihantus. This group is so large, it's gonna take two people to take care of this. Reagan High School, Wind Ensemble, Symphonic Band, Concert Band, and Jazz Ensemble I. The award will be received by their director, Mr. Robert Johnston. Mr. Johnston's co-director, who is Mr. Kenneth Tisser, uh, will receive the award for Superior Rating for the Chamber Orchestra and for the chorus, who is actually under the direction of Ms. Minyon Dobbins, and another Superior Rating for the Lewisville Middle School Chorus, also under the direction of Ms. Minyon Dobbins. By the way, she's performing in her spring concert tonight, so she couldn't come, so the guys are gonna handle it for her. Next on our list, Waukataun High School, the man who does it all, Symphonic Band Director, Mr. Quincy Lundey. And last but not least, the Concert Choir from West Forsyth High School, under the direction of Mr. Jacob Cook, who has also received an award for the Reynolds High School Acappella Choir. Their band director, I mean, their chorus director, excuse me, is Mr. Josh Settlemeyer. Ladies and gentlemen, please give a round of applause for our directors and their students.
Next, Andy Zabat from the City of Winston-Salem will present the Clean and Green Awards.
Hi, everyone. My name is Andy Zabat. I'm the Executive Director of Keep Winston-Salem Beautiful, and I have Aldona with me. She is my liaison for Garden Club Council, and then Dr. Shailene Miller, who is the Director of Sustainability for the City of Winston-Salem. Tonight, we are honoring the Clean and Green winners for the 2004-2025 school year. Clean and Green is a program that is run by Garden Club Council and Keep Winston-Salem Beautiful. This program encourages schools to think about sustainability and educating students on sustainable practices, fostering pride in their school and ownership over these projects. These schools have put forth a monumental effort to beautify their spaces, plant garden beds, and reduce litter on school property. Tonight, we'd like to honor the winners and recognize the honorable mentions. First place goes to Moore Magnet Elementary School. Moore has created a community garden, you can go ahead and clap. Moore has created a community garden where they are harvesting between 40 to 60 pounds of produce every two weeks. The food is given to students in need, providing healthy options and reducing a food desert. They're dedicated to rebuilding the habitat for local wildlife and have done a tremendous job in their efforts. In second place, we have Haynes Magnet. Haynes has a group of Eco-Wars, Eco-Warriors, which is a student-led advocacy group that volunteers annually at Earth Day. They created a shared table in their cafeteria to help reduce food waste and help students that might be in need. Haynes also participated in our first-ever cardboard boat race, winning their heat and also taking home the Best Engineered Boat Award. Our honorable mention goes to RJ Reynolds High School. Reynolds has worked on beautifying their campus by cleaning out overgrown beds, removing dead plants, and adding multiple stormwater runoff prevention methods around campus. Additionally, they've also created a bird bath garden, providing food and water to local wildlife. And then our runners-up are Winston-Salem Preparatory Academy, Morgan Elementary, Jefferson Middle School, Jefferson Elementary School, got it. And North Forsyth High School. Thank you to everyone participated. We look forward to your continued efforts in creating a more sustainable future.
Next, Courtney Tuck, the Director of Social Studies, will present the 2025 How I See It Deeper Learning Collaboration with the Pulitzer Center Awards Recognitions.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Superintendent McManus, and members of the Board. It's my honor tonight to recognize the winners of our district-wide How I See It Photo Journalism Contest, created in partnership with the Pulitzer Center. This project invited students to capture their world through the lens of a camera and use their voices to tell the stories that matter to them. Tonight, we celebrate two of our outstanding winners whose photographs and artist statements exemplified the creativity this project was designed to inspire. We invite you to view their work and the submissions from the other finalists in the lobby while you are here this evening. From grades three through five, our winner is Jana Jenkins, from Ms. Paris's class at the Downtown School. And from high school, Sean Prasanna, from Mr. Livengood's class at Reagan High School. Thank you.
Yes, any parents in the audience, please stand. Next, Melissa Agee, our K-12 ELA Director, and Sarah Rhine, Director of K-12 Arts, will present the 2025 Maya Angelou Essay Winners.
Good evening, Board. I'm Sarah Rhine, the Program Manager for Media Services and Digital Teaching and Learning. It is my great honor this evening to introduce to you our Maya Angelou winners. And to tell us a little bit about that, from Atlanta, is Ms. The Maya Tutte, President and CEO of the Maya Angelou Foundation.
Good afternoon, esteemed Board Members, educators, students, family members, and community members. On behalf of the estate of Dr. Maya Angelou and the Dr. Maya Angelou Foundation, I am beyond honored to join you in acknowledging and celebrating this year's top recipients of the Dr. Maya Angelou Essay Writing Contest, a program that embodies the spirit of literary excellence, personal expression, and resilience, values championed by Dr. Maya Angelou herself. In 2019, the Dr. Maya Angelou Essay Writing Contest was launched by Mr. Guy Johnson, the only child of Dr. Maya Angelou in Oakland, California. Since its inception, this contest has, has expanded to Winston-Salem, and it provides students with an opportunity to reflect on their personal experiences, explore themes of identity, and sharpen their writing skills. Through storytelling and self-expression, participants reflect on the wisdom and courage that Dr. Angelou shared with the world. Our students have shown remarkable creativity, depth, and courage in their essays, addressing themes of overcoming challenges, embracing their voices, and shaping their own destinies. More than just a competition, this contest fosters critical thinking, competence, and love for language, empowering young writers to share their truth and inspire others. The success of this initiative is a testament to the dedication of our educators who guide and encourage students along their writing journey. It also is a reflection of our shared commitment to elevate literacy, storytelling, and the power of words in shaping our futures. Moving forward, I urge us to continue to invest in initiatives like this to cultivate creativity, empower youth voices, and ensure that writing remains the cornerstone of education. As Dr. Angelou once said, "There is no greater agony than bearing an untold story inside you." It is our responsibility to provide platforms and safe spaces for all of our children, our students, to share their stories, free their voice, and build competence in their ability to make an impact. Thank you so much for your continued support and partnership in support of this transformative initiative.
Right, from West Forsyth High School, in third place is Ms. Lindsay Martin. Congratulations, Lindsay. Lindsay is the recipient of an $1,800 prize. Congratulations. Our second-place winner from Reagan High School was unable to be with us this evening, and that is Ms. Cassidy Craven, and Ms. Cassidy is the recipient of a $3,000 prize. And in first place is Ms. Michaela Monroe Johnson from Mount Tabor High School, a $5,000 prize recipient.
Family members and supporters, please stand. And parents. Next, Carol Chandler and Melissa Agee, our K-12 ELA Director, will lead us in the 2025 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools District Poet Laureate Recognition.
Thank you, Board Kaplan, Board Members, and Superintendent McManus. We are excited to present to you our 2025 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Poet Laureate. Each year, we partner with Forsyth Education Partnership to offer students in grades nine through 12 the opportunity to write and perform original poetry. This year, we had 25 poets compete for our district competition. Tonight, I have the honor of presenting to you our first-place winner from Parkland High School, Ms. Zari Fullwood, who will present her poem, "That's Pretty for a Black Girl."
"That's Pretty for a Black Girl." Your name is so pretty for a black girl. Way easier than the ones I usually pronounce. Whatever happened to more white names? I mean, what are done like your ancestors who believed that freedom was better than bondage? I mean, sorry. Whatever happened to Becky? Claire? Suzanne too? When did parents start using every letter in the alphabet to create a black child's name? Regardless of what it is, I'll mispronounce it anyway. A, Aaliyah. But it's not spelled the way you think it is. It stands for aggression. Not ambition, not audacity, not art, but aggression. Because my voice is too strong, my stance is too firm, my truth too sharp for ears that only look whispers and white tears. Present, B, Breonna. Breonna Taylor, you know her? Or do you only know her name as a headline, a hashtag, a chant that lost its echo before justice ever spoke? B, it's for bravery for her time, for bullets that found her in her sleep, for black women screaming her name into the wind, hoping one day she'll receive justice, but the same cycle continues again and again. Oh, she must not be here today. Let's move on to the next hashtag, I mean, person. C, Karisha. Too ghetto for corporate and too black for beauty. How dare you? How dare you disrespect the white man in his natural habitat? You too loud for the finer things and too dark for desirability. Success is measured in shades. How close can you creep towards cream? The world loves coffee until a black woman looks like it. Then all of a sudden, no one likes their coffee black. They say, "Pretty for a dark-skinned girl," like beauty needs bleach, like worth is washed out with every shade lighter. Here, let's give you names, they don't matter anyway. Z, sorry, the last letter, the last chance to get it right. Z is for zooming past childhood for skipping recess to prove I belong. Because the beads of my hair and pigtails didn't prove anything but my shrinkage for knowing that gifted don't mean free. Words stick to my skin like glue without a single project in sight. You're so well spoken, so articulate. Translation, you didn't expect me to sound like this. Didn't expect me to fit into your idea of excellence without shrinking first. The weight of the world sits on black children's shoulders, balancing books and burdens, expectations, and exhaustion. Be perfect, speak perfect, and your name, it must be perfect too. Not too hard to say, not too black to say, but my name is mine. Ho, unapologetically stepped in pride, spoken in history. Sorry? Now, sorry, that's a pretty name.
Are there any parents or supporters from Parkland for Zari here? If you will, please stand.
Can I share something very quickly Chair Kaplan?
Absolutely.
About Zari? So, not only is she amazing writer, poet, but she, I wanted to say this because kids do things, and she is one that doesn't seek any credit for it, but she started at Parkland High School. She saw a need for students needing clothing and needing other supplies, and she started a closet on her own. It's like a clothes closet, it's like a little store actually, because I've visited, but it has clothes and has hygiene products in it, and it has, they've done food, but like we have the most amazing students, and Zari, you are at the top of the list, just giving back and making a difference. So, congratulations, Zari. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
I wanted people to know, we did all of these recognitions tonight, it may have been like, wow, you have a lot of recognitions tonight, but that is because our last board meeting, normally the last board meeting of the year, students are still in school. Our next board meeting, students are not in school. So, to get them back will be a challenge. So, we added them all to tonight, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that's why we had so many.
Yes, and I'd also like to just make an announcement, a red Mitsubishi Outlander with Florida tag, 634-4AZ, and a gray Hyundai with North Carolina tag, JJV-8566. If you all could move your cars, because some other cars are blocked in. We are now moving on to our public comments section. We will hear public comments on the agenda items only. If you've signed up to speak, we ask that you sit near the aisle seats closest to the podium. We expect civility. Please be considerate and respectful, no personal attacks. Direct your comments only to me as Board Chair and not to anyone in the audience. Know that we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. You have three minutes to speak, and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. Our first speaker is Jennifer Leahy.
Good evening, I wanted to speak on two things, the budget and the HVAC for Glenn High School. As far as the budget is concerned, when I looked at the agenda, there's, on the web, there's different little things you can click on, and it said, okay, I'm losing my thought now, sorry. Okay, let's go to the HVAC. Please, please, please approve the HVAC for Glenn High School. We really need it, it is way too hot in that gym. That would be great. Yeah, I told us, lost my train on the budget thing, sorry. Oh, now I remember. It said the formula from the Commissioners, and I was just, I don't know, you can't answer me, but I was hoping that you went to them with what I said about having a percentage being proportionate to what all they're responsible for, and not just one of the formulas that they offered. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Krejic.
Good evening y'all. I would like to start by thanking you all for getting me answers to my questions two weeks ago. Pretty difficult to get them some other times, and thank you all for helping me get those. Which leads me to talking tonight, I want to talk about next year's budget and the lack of transparency shown. I haven't seen the budget, I'm sure it's out there somewhere, we haven't seen any public discussion about what's actually in the budget. And none of the, none of my colleagues have seen that either, and it makes it very difficult for us to advocate for what's best for our children and seeing what's in it, and we know that like some 20, 21 million is going to be cut. And with the recent events, we have lost all trust in senior staff for making the best fiscal decisions for our students. Not individually, but as a collective, we have lost trust in that entity. The little bit of digging that I've done, I have asked questions and shot out emails, I have found that through emailing, there's going to be Discovery Ed, and I only expected to have like a minute, so I'm slowing down tonight, Discovery Ed, Explore Learning, and 11 other digital resources have been cut out of next year's budget from the email that I received. These, all 11, 13 of those are designed to help teachers actually teach kids their first student learning. But just like I talked about two weeks ago, about the indoctrination that we've been led to about this, these tests are so important, so important, that's the only thing we focus on, it's just surprising to me that iReady, it isn't surprising to me, that iReady Diagnostics saved that cut. iReady is a resource that assesses student learning, that in action disrupts six days of instruction, math, English, language, arts, beginning, middle, end of the year, and it just disrupts the entire six days of learning. And it has very little positive effect on actual student learning. This is just one example of how not listening to teachers shows up in next year's budget, and that's only the one little part that I know of. We need transparency in this new budget. I know it goes to, we're going to ask the county Commissioners very soon for money, but we should have already had transparency. We need it so that we can advocate for what's best for our students and begin restoring trust in Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Jenny Easter.
Good evening. As President of FCAE, our Public School Staff Union, I stand before you on behalf of thousands of educators, support staff, and school employees who make our public school system run every single day, regardless of the uncertainty, the disrespect, or the fear we're currently facing. We understand that this budget crisis may not have started at this table, and we recognize that many of you may not have been given the full picture about how serious this shortfall actually is, or how long it has actually been looming. But the rug was pulled out from all of us. Even in this moment of crisis, especially in this moment of crisis, there is an opportunity to lead with clarity, courage, and care. And the union has been meeting with workers across the district, and we are calling for three immediate commitments from this Board. First, a written commitment from the Board of Ed that every worker will receive their full salary in May and through the summer, and people, because people cannot pay their rent on good intentions. They cannot feed their families on, we're trying. As a district, you have the authority to send a message that wages will not be withheld, but we need it in writing. Second,
Order please.
We demand transparent, ongoing, and public communication around every meeting, plan, and proposal that impacts workers. We are tired of learning about our futures through rumors, secondhand reports, and social media. You are making decisions that determine whether hundreds of staff stay employed, and we deserve to know what's being discussed before it's decided. And third, we call on this Board to secure a real public commitment from the Forsyth County Commissioners to fund and protect our staff and avoid massive layoffs going into next year. We know that the gap can't be closed with cuts alone. You need the county, and we do too, and we must put forward a united front in that demand. As we move forward, be clear in your district messaging that we wouldn't even be here if the state were doing its job to fully fund our public schools.
Order please, order please.
The notion that we are somehow overpaying for too many staff is absurd. Our schools are not bloated with staff, they are exhausted. If the state of North Carolina were actually funding what students and staff deserve, if they were funding Leandro, like the court ordered, we would not be in this mess, and we would not be staring down these impossible choices. If this moment has taught us anything, it is that this Board must prioritize a legislative agenda to fight for us. We, our coworkers and students, need you to fight for us. And you must work more directly with our union to hold the General Assembly accountable for what they are not delivering to the people of Forsyth County. Thank you.
Michelle Jordan.
Good evening. So, I've been up here many times before to talk to you about all sorts of things, and most especially about funding, because that's what we've been in. As Jenny said, we have been fighting for decades now to try to get funding. And we are in this position because of the fact that we haven't had enough people standing up with us. We have begged and begged, and we really need you and our county commission to really be coming together and working together for our community, and we need you to be going to our General Assembly and not just having simple conversations and breakfasts and all of the little social things that I hear about when I ask some of you and some of our county commission, but we need real conversations about what they're doing and their decisions and how it is affecting our schools. We are getting strangled by their actions. This is on purpose, and we know it. And we would not be in this position if we did not have that going on. But to talk specifically about what has happened here, we need, as Jenny had said, we need full transparency. We really need conversations to be out in front, and we need to be a part of those conversations. Our union deserves to have a seat at the table where we are part of the decision-making when we're talking about who and what is happening to the people in our community. We don't deserve to find out about these things after the fact, we don't, I mean, I know that I was sitting in on a meeting last week, and it still wasn't clear to even some of you sitting up here what the last riffs were, who were these people, and what was actually cut, because it's all just kind of being said in this, I don't know, cloak and dagger. We shouldn't be having to try to figure things out, we should be having conversations with you so that we can work together to figure out what our students need and get what we all need and deserve. Last night, there was, it was just kind of funny because I looked this up, so 10 years ago, there was a study put out by Harvard about how out of the entire country, every single county was laid out, and there were two counties that were lower than Forsyth County for upward mobility for people who were in poverty. And Forsyth County was only higher than two out in the Dakotas that had Native American reservations. And there was, he came last night to speak, and do you know that one of the things that they spoke about was that the way that we're going to get through this is if we actually have quality education in the community? So, we need to not be shorting anything right now. We need you guys going to the county commission, we need you putting forward a, the burden should not be on us as the staff, and it should not be on our students because of mistakes were made and because underfunding has been having. We still need you to be asking for what our community deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Radelovic. Radelovic, excuse me.
Mr. Art of my friends, ditto, ditto of what these people have said. And since I can't resist a microphone, I'm going to continue for about 30 seconds. I'm not going to tell you anything that you don't already know. It is expensive to educate students. It is expensive. But I'm going to ask you all to come at this problem with a growth mindset, not a fix. I'm going to ask you to kind of consider the pandemic money that we got, and I'm not, I'm going to ask you to think of it in terms of, oh, we were washing money and it was too much and it led to all these problems. No, pandemic money was not enough. We need you, we need you to go to the Commissioners. We need you to go to Raleigh. It's no secret that Raleigh is hostile to public education. But we need you to go to the Commissioners and not ask for less, but ask for more. I think it's a disgrace that we're not going to have one-one computers next year for students. I think it's a disgrace, as a social studies teacher, I'm losing two key resources, Discovery Ed and New Zella. Now, that may not mean anything to you all, but to me, it gets my students reading. It gets my students reading on their grade level, and we're losing that. As a math teacher, I don't know what I'm going to have next year, right? I don't know what my school is going to have next year, but there's a good chance that it won't be what I had this year. I, as a member of Labor, could make suggestions on where we could cut fat, but you probably don't want to hear that. Any complex organization has waste, has fat, right? But I'll tell you where that fat is and isn't, it's not in student-facing jobs. And when I say student-facing jobs, I mean bus drivers, I mean classified staff, I mean cafeteria workers. You know who the most beloved person in a school is? The porter. It ain't the principal. So, thank you, I've overdone my time, but I do encourage you, let's get more money, not less. Thank you.
Derek Setzer. Derek Setzer.
Good evening Board Members, my name is Derek Setzer, and I'm a proud fifth-grade educator and member of the Forsyth County Association of Educators. Tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of the staff, student, and families who are directly impacted by the decisions that you're making, especially during this time of fiscal crisis and transition. First thing, can you guarantee full transparency of the corrective action plan due to the State Board by May 15? Will the full document, not just a summary, be made public for educators and families before it's submitted? Now, you may answer, we plan to summarize the points for the stakeholders once it's planned and finalized, but summaries lack the detail educators and family need to evaluate the integrity of the plan. Will the full document, including financial breakdowns and accountability measures, be posted publicly before it's submitted? You may also say that, oh, this is a personnel and finance issue. You may also say that, oh, this is a personnel and finance issue. All sorts of the plans, they can't be made public or shareable because of confidentiality. Personnel names can be redacted, and the overall financial strategy, priorities, and accountability systems can and must be transparent. Withholding these key sections undermines the public trust at a time when it is already fragile. You could also say that we will release the plan after it's been reviewed and approved by the State Board of Education, waiting until after approval silences as stakeholders are input whenever it matters the most. Why aren't we reviewing it before submission so that the community can ensure the plan reflects our students' and schools' real needs? Next, how will the loss of the current staff members impact students, particularly in Title I schools, that are already struggling with support and staffing? It is not enough to say that central office roles were cut or that schools have discretion. What concrete steps are being taken to prevent deeper inequities from growing in the schools that need it the most? Now, again, you may say, well, we tried to minimize the impact by cutting central office tasks and non-instructional roles, but cuts in any department eventually ripple down into the classroom through reduced support, slower responses, and fewer resources. What measurable protections are being applied specifically to our most under-resourced schools? You also may say that, oh, each school was given discretion in deciding on how it absorbs the changes. Discretion without clear equity guidelines risks deepening existing disparities. How is the district ensuring that the schools with the greatest need aren't taking the hardest hits? You may also say, oh, we're confident that the remaining staff will step up and fill in the gaps. Staff burnout is already unsustainable. Asking more from fewer people isn't a solution. It's a setup for failure. What supports are in place to prevent mass attrition and worsening student outcomes? It is, or if the remaining staff are expected to step up, I ask with what resources and what cost to the health and students' learning?
Rhonda Mays.
Good evening, Chairwoman Kaplan, the board, and Superintendent McManus. I am here speaking as an individual, as a tax-paying individual here in Forsyth County. I want to know from you, what is the plan? What is the plan for making this district whole again? My children both graduated from this district, and I worked and served in this district for over 23 years. During those times, we never once worried about if we were going to get paid. Never. 23 years. There were times during that period that departments had to trim their budgets, yes. There were times in which we looked at other options of how to employ individuals in the district. What is the plan to get back to at least 90% of the school-aged children attending school in this district? It was the norm for children to attend school in this district for many years. With the decrease in the number of students in attendance in this district, that means a decrease in funding for the district, and it means an increase in the amount of money that the district is paying out for the vouchers. What is the plan to rebuild the trust in this district? As you've already heard from previous speakers, trust is a major issue right now with your staff here. People don't know what to expect, and people are looking for other employment elsewhere where they can have a little bit more security. You need your staff, so it's important that you build that trust back. What is the plan to lobby North Carolina legislators, Forsyth County Commissioners, and philanthropic groups for additional funding? You know the importance of having various positions in this district and the impact they have on students' learning and success. In closing, there is much work to be done in order to get this district back on solid ground and solid footing. It is going to take communication and transparency. You are one of the top employers in this county. There are eyes on you concerning how you handle this situation. Thank you for your time and your attention to this matter.
Harry Morley.
Chairman Kaplan, Superintendent McManus, board members. I'm Harry Morley. I'm a 36-year veteran public school teacher and lifelong advocate for working people and public schools, currently running for Congress, North Carolina's 10th District. Every student deserves a high-quality education, no matter what their ZIP code. Every student deserves a highly qualified teacher, no matter what their ZIP code. Every student deserves a highly competent educational professional to help them with their educational matters, no matter what their ZIP code. Every student deserves a highly equipped and well-supplied school, creating a learning environment that supports their public education, no matter what their ZIP code. Fully funded public schools equal stronger communities for all of us. This current financial situation is getting in the way of that high-quality education. We need to attract highly qualified teachers through competitive compensation. All too often, veteran teachers are left out of meaningful raises from state legislators. They lack meaningful incentives to stick around after 20 years of service, and you need those veteran teachers to bring the young guys along. The NCE legislators have failed to fully fund Leandro to meet the financial needs of our public schools. They continue to take away funding through vouchers going to the wealthy but not those who need it the most. Legislators continue to offer raises and one-time bonuses to lessen the increase of the cost of living, leaving teachers and families often in financial bind that requires them to get additional sources of income. So I've lived it, I've taught it, and now I'm fighting for it again. We need transparency in your decision that will help us climb out of this financial deficit as a school system, so we can once again provide a high-quality public education for all. We need to know how our students, parents, and teachers will be impacted by your decisions tonight, so we can plan accordingly. I have three asks. First, request the money that we need from the county commissioners, all of it, to ensure our students get a high-quality education, no matter what ZIP code they're from. Second, we need to clarify clarity and transparency and focus for the direction of the financial shortfall that lead us out of this, with the decisions you're going to make tonight, and what direction, when to say in Forsyth County school system is going. And most of all, make sure we are getting paid, especially our assistants and instructional educational staff. Thank you for your time.
Peter Antonozzi.
My public comments tonight include agenda items on the budget, but mostly Action Item J. In 2021, the board selected one of the most contaminated downtown sites to relocate Brunson Elementary. This site is so contaminated that for the last four years, the district has been negotiating with the state's version of the EPA, the Department of Environmental Quality. Part of these negotiations now require the import of clean soil from Davidson County. This newest requirement is the reason for Board Action Item J tonight, additional soil testing for $100,000 you likely do not have to spend. This exact board agenda item was discussed on a two-hour Teams meeting hosted by the Department of Environmental Quality two weeks ago on April 29. That two-hour meeting was solely focused on the status of the Brunson Elementary site. I made time to attend the meeting, and I noticed the absence of every single board member. In fact, not a single executive cabinet member attended this very important meeting. If they did attend, they would have learned that despite the import of Davidson dirt, the land use restrictions will prohibit any disturbance of soil without additional negotiations from the state. If a teacher wants to plant a garden with their students, nope. If the PTA wants to install a playground, nope, and not without negotiating their plans with the state first. What also came out of that two-hour Teams meeting was the Department of Environmental Quality calculated exposure risks for the site in July 2024. However, this critical risk assessment was never shared at any public board meeting. Contrary to the 2024 risk assessment, the board approved funds to build Brunson, currently estimated about $50 million, again, money you don't have, a month later at the August 27 board meeting, a month after they did the risk calculations. The board invited their hired environmental lawyer to attend the meeting. He stated no contaminants exceeded commercial levels, and if the board had attended that Teams meeting, they would have seen this presentation slide, they would realize their lawyer underestimated the risk. Highlight in yellow are all of the contaminants exceeding commercial levels. You see the theme of the public comments tonight. Trust, communications, transparency is broken in this district. Members of the executive cabinet are not communicating problems with the superintendent. The superintendent is not communicating with the board chair. The board chair is not communicating with the board. No one is faithfully communicating these issues with staff, parents, and students. Without effective communication and transparency, the end result is busted budgets, investigations, and unacceptable health risks for an elementary school.
Riley Barnes.
Good evening. As I've been listening to the stories of my partners in education this week, I cannot help but to see the faces of my students, from the speech-language pathologists that collect my children with speech impediments, and they return to my classroom as competent public speakers, as I see them drive off the buses and hundreds excited to come by their faithful and focused bus drivers navigating those crazy highways. Clearly, the concern and the support extends massive wingspans. But today, I'm here to speak on behalf of the beginner teacher. This is not my first year in education, however, this is my first year in Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools, and as a part of our roster, an ever-growing proportion is beginner teachers, most notably teachers who do not attend or do not come to education with a degree in education, no fault of their own, of course. However, do our students not deserve teachers who are competent in the fields that they teach? Do they not deserve the necessary training required to make our students competent learners? Despite national literacy rates being constantly questioned, North Carolina schools have recently celebrated national-leading growth. According to NCDPI and ENCE, more than half of our K-3 students have exceeded benchmark literacy assessments and are performing well above, and that's thanks to programs like Letters. Fortunately, I had the luxury of being able to attend Appalachian State University. I completed the Letters training with the time that it deserved. Two years, lengthy meetings spanning days. Our county can continue to contribute to that title of students that are exceeding growth as far as literacy. However, as I'm hearing from my colleagues who did not have the same luxury of being afforded that time, their trainings now span a few hours. Master's degree work in a few hours. What's the budget going to do to that program? Until you see the drastic disparity between a student who has been afforded the education they need to become a competent reader, perform on a 3rd-grade EOG, and their shoulders slump and look at you and say, I can't read this, what does that say about our county's belief in our students? In a state with a 15% attrition rate among beginner teachers, we cannot afford to get burnt out quite yet. I'm being told to remember my why. I found my why two weeks ago, y'all. I just got here. A lack of transparency, a lack of dignity is only going to continue to fan the flames beneath our school system. We demand to be a voice at the table for the sake of our students, especially our emergent readers, and if you expect excellent education, we expect excellence in dignity and respect.
Reverend Paul Ford.
Good evening, madam chair, members of the board. Tonight, in addition to considering this budget, you are going to hear an update on family engagement for Dr. Clinton Wilson, who has been a tremendous partner of ours from this district as we have worked, my brother's keeper, Winston-Salem, to look at improving outcomes for all of our children, but especially boys and young men of color. You're going to hear about the Cares Team. You're going to hear about parent-family engagement coordinators. You're going to hear about literacy programs and gear-up family supports that are designed to increase the rate of disadvantaged students going to college. What we see in the data is clear. Our public school district is becoming blacker and browner and poorer every single year, and what that means is that we have more students who are coming into the classroom with high ACE scores, adverse childhood experiences, more students confronting housing insecurity, confronting food insecurity, with inadequate access to reliable transportation. All of these are barriers to family engagement. What we know is that effective family engagement improves outcomes for all of our children. Our district is serving more multilingual learners. Our district is serving more children who receive exceptional educational services. And so all of this is happening in the context of a budget crisis and cuts to support staff, and you have heard all of that from the folks who have spoken before us. Earlier today, you received a letter, each and every one of you received a letter from more than a dozen partners, including Action for Equity, but also the Winston-Salem Foundation, also FCAE, also Love Literacy, and a host of other organizations that is calling upon this school board to embrace a set of six priorities for our interim superintendent, no matter who you appoint to that position, because now is not the time to retreat from strong district-community partnerships. Our children need us working together more, not less, and that means that we need to lean in, not pull back, from all of the support staff that help our children, connect them to resources now more than ever. I have heard members of this school board talk about the standard that Superintendent McManus set is not one we can expect an interim superintendent to make. That is a hard no. That is the standard for all leaders in this school district going forward. You lean into community and work with community, because for too long, it felt like there was a wall between community and the school district. The school district cannot do it alone. Community cannot do it alone. Together, we can do everything. We can take care of our children, and we need this school board to advocate more strongly for Leandro and the full funding of our schools that will bring $107 million into this school district. Imagine what you could do with that. Instead of cutting staff, increasing staff, we need you to advocate. Get together with the other school boards. Fight for the full funding of our schools.
Alan Daniel.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Ms. McManus, members of the board. I come to you tonight like a lot of other people have with a lot of questions. So I'll just start. I usually don't read, y'all know that, but I got too many to remember. Who approved the contract for the financial consultant and when? It is on the agenda with a price tag of $48,000 for two months. Any contract over $25,000 requires board approval. The contract is on the agenda, but the consultant has already started work. Within a week of commencing work, after reviewing March 25 financials, a news report said the consultant was reporting that the 2025 budget deficit was not the $8 million that we had been told, but $16 million. Given that the consultant was not, did not start until the end of April and Given that the consultant did not start until the end of April, and given that the pattern of overspending most likely continued until his arrival, what is the actual deficit now? Given that the deficit is at least $16 million, and given that the fund balance is only $5 million, where is the $48,000 coming from to pay the consultant? Given that the deficit is at least $16 million, and given that the fund balance is only $5 million, and given that the monthly pay and benefits run somewhere around $50 million a month, where is the money coming from to pay payroll? One of the ways that the $8 million budget cuts for this fiscal year were going to be achieved was by sending licensed people in central office or elsewhere, people that weren't in the classroom, into the classroom and not pay subs. Yet, where I work, I've seen teachers leave, four of them so far, and the people I see taking their place have ESS badges. So how are those cuts being achieved if we're still paying subs? According to the news reports, $21.5 million has been cut from next year's budget. What are those cuts? When were they made? And by whom? My friend, Mr. Antonazzi, brought you a little bit of stuff. I'm going to share that and ask a question. Tonight, you're going to be asked to approve a $100,000 for soil testing. Recently, this board made a budget amendment that basically gave away $750,000 in federal funds that the EPA awarded this district to clean up that site without any explanation whatsoever as to why we lost that $750,000. One final question. Given that the current board and the current administration are responsible for the financial position the district finds itself in, should they be the ones to appoint the next superintendent? Thank you.
Jennifer Gallagher.
Good evening, Superintendent McManus, Board Chair Kaplan, and Vice Chair Bohannon. My name is Jennifer Gallagher, and as I stated in my speech last month, not only am I a teacher here in Forsyth County in my third year, but I'm also a parent of two children who have graduated within this district. I'd like to talk to you about staffing cuts. My school in particular was recently told that four instructional assistants needed to be cut from the EC staff that we currently have. As a district, I understand that our ADM is down, but one thing that I don't think we take into consideration is how many children in that ADM are EC students. ECS, which is our Extended Content Standards, classes are at capacity with the potential to be at max capacity with the three classrooms we do have next year in my building alone. Also to mention that occupational course of study classrooms next year will also potentially be at capacity. Cutting four instructional assistants in EC classrooms will limit small group instruction in reading and math schools, prevent OCS students from getting to their job sites, and learning skills needed after they graduate to navigate future endeavors. Cutting instructional assistants would also increase teacher workload, compromise inclusion and compliance with IEPs. For students with IEPs or Five Oh Four plans, removing IAs might violate legal requirements if those services are specified in that plan. We know that the district has paid millions of legal fees due to compensatory services in the EC department, and it will continue to receive lawsuits if we are not in compliance with federal laws and we cut those instructional assistants throughout the district. Thank you all.
Thank you. We are moving on to our discussion items. We have five tonight. First, Tricia McManus, our superintendent. And Vice Chair Alex Bohannon and I will give a budget update and a contract with Hill Consultants.
Thank you. I know that Kevin is pulling up the contract. And so, this is going to just be specifically about the contract that was mentioned earlier with Hill Consultants. First and foremost, Hill has worked just a little bit about this consulting group and why. They've worked with about 85 school districts in North Carolina. All of them have been CFOs in North Carolina. And so, they come with a lot of credibility, and they were recommended to us by the Department of Public Instruction, by DPI. When DPI realized that we were overspending in state allotments, and you saw that in the letter, they actually asked Tommy to reach out to this consulting group. And so, Mr. Cran's reached out. So he did. They came in, and they started gathering a lot of records and data and things to take and start the process. At the same, two days later, is when we received notice from the Department of Education in a state board meeting saying that one of the things we had to do was hire technical assistants. And so, we, at that time, looked at the proposal that Hill Consulting did. Ricky had already been here, one of the consultants, and took a bunch of files. And so, they immediately started working with our team. After meeting with them in the first day they were there, and there was no, the first day they were there, they came as per DPI. There was no contract yet. They came to start looking at everything. Shortly after the letter came, I asked, because of urgency with some of the things that they were finding in the current year budget, I asked our legal team and our chair and vice chair, could I, with what I can actually approve at $25,000, could we start the work with them? Because we're talking about this fiscal year, which is over on June 30th. And we need to make sure that we are doing everything we can to understand what we can do within the parameters of the budget, what we can move where. The state system, as they have told us, is extremely complex, and you need people that understand the intricacies, the ins and outs of these systems, and what you can do to save dollars. With that said, we knew right away that if we could start it, we would put the full contract on the board immediately, and this was the next board meeting. There is a sense of urgency right now, because we do need to make sure that every month the rest of this year, and we've already told our staff that there is not a problem with payroll, May 30th or whatever the last day of, whenever we get paid for this month, at the end of the month, it's fine, and I sent that out in writing. So basically, the contract would allow them to support us this fiscal year from April through the end of June, to June 30th, to help us make sure that we know exactly what the overages are this year, what they are, where they came from, and how we should go about addressing the overages. So this contract, yes, it is for $48,000. The savings that they will help us make from the work they're doing is how we would even pay for this contract. So I'm going to open it up if there are any other comments from our chair and vice chair or questions.
Yes, I'm just going to pretty much reiterate what the superintendent said, that the work from Hill Consultants was urgent. It was recommended from the state board. The superintendent was within her rights with the $25,000 to begin the contract. This group is a very impressive group. We've already had several meetings with them. We look forward to the next report as they continue to work through our finances and to continue to find the savings. And in fact, as the superintendent said, the savings that they are uncovering is actually paying for this contract. I'm very supportive of that. I'm very impressed with them, and they are working very hard and diligently. Vice Chair Bohannon, do you have comments?
Yeah, I have comments, and then I think I have a couple of questions for the public. Well, the questions aren't for the public. The questions are for you, but the public needs to know. The first thing I'll say is that what's important to me is that we understand and we have knowledge from people who know North Carolina school finance in and out. You can't hear me? I thought, okay. Thank you. All right. Is this better? All right. So it's important that we understand from people who have experience with public school finance in North Carolina about what our problems are and how to address them. And both of the consultants that we're working with have extensive knowledge. One has been, was a CFO in one of the largest public school systems in this state for 30 years. The other is a retired CFO from the Department of Public Instruction. And so, I think they've been working to really help us understand kind of where we are. And also, they're working with the state as well, and they have good partnerships with the state so that we can make sure that we're addressing what it is that the state is requesting of us. But I think the question I had, and I think to the point about transparency, is Madam Superintendent, what was the date that the consultants started working with us?
So we received the letter from DPI, I think it was May 1st. Is that a Thursday? Because I think I was at principal's meeting here when I heard that DPI had, or not the DPI, I'm sorry, the state board had had a meeting where we were discussed. I believe it was May 1st, a Thursday. So their first time in the district was two days prior to that, which was April, whatever the Tuesday was. And that was their first time in the district. They had arranged with our chief financial officer to come in and start looking at the books at that time. I learned about that, and it said I really need to meet with them before they leave. I need to know what's going on. So that was at the end of the day that I checked in. Two days later, we received a letter from the state board, and that same day, and it said we needed technical assistance, that same day I received a proposal for a scope of work to support us. Is that what you were asking?
That is.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Thank you. Our next discussion item, John Sullivan, our district athletic director, and Alexis McCoy, Assistant Director of Athletics, will give us a graduation update.
Thank you. Chair Kaplan, Board of Education, and Ms. McManus. We're here today just to kind of summarize what is going on at the Coliseum and the arena area with traffic, just to kind of let everybody know. So in our PowerPoint, we kind of went through a timeline of how we found out about this. So in September, we released the schedules to all the schools. And in November, we started working with the Coliseum because we had heard rumors about construction with the grounds. And so then, we started working on, well, how is this going to affect graduation and so forth? We kept going. And then in February of this year, we met with all the principals and senior sponsors about there is going to be some traffic, changes in traffic for graduation. Please start communicating this with your seniors so that they know it's not going to be the normal thing. And then in April, we all met at the Coliseum, myself, Mr. Sullivan, our DOT, the LJVM, the arena, and we talked about how we can navigate through Deacon Boulevard being closed. How are we going to get all these children and their guests to the Coliseum and to the arena when you can't access Deacon Boulevard? And so, we came up with a plan. We communicated that with the schools. We've communicated that on social media, on our website, and we hope that it will work. As you see, our graduation times, when we had to extend the school year for three days because of the snow, our graduation dates and times did not change. We did have to change our rehearsal times because they were during exams, but that didn't affect the actual graduation schedule. And then, as you can see later on in the PowerPoint, are the maps that we hope that everyone will be able to understand and read. Basically, our students, staff, and special guests will have passes to get down Deacon Boulevard off of shore fair. Everyone else will have to use, depending on what school, depends on what parking area they will use. And I believe you guys have a copy of all that.
We do. Thank you.
Uh huh.
Any questions? Yes, Board Member Y.
In our community, we just saw Forsyth Tech graduation, and we also saw Winston-Salem State University graduation. Their traffic flow was not the best.
As a matter of fact, I went over to the Coliseum today and talked with them about it. There were some quirks in theirs because they didn't. So what we're doing with our rehearsals is we're making our students and staff follow this plan so that they're used to it. And for those, they did not. And so, it was like everyone was a free-for-all during their graduations.
I just want to make sure we did confer with those, because I unfortunately worked very close to that, and it was not pretty.
Yeah, I talked to them today about it, and they're making a little bit of changes also.
Any other questions? Yes, Board Member Crowley?
Yep. So I've attended, I don't know how many graduations there, and it was already very difficult. So, I mean, how, I mean, people came 45 minutes early and still were late for their kids' graduation. So what are we telling parents to be? And I have a son graduating this year. I got something saying, you know, plan ahead, but for most reasonable people, planning ahead for a seven-minute drive is 45 minutes. Like, what are we expecting families to do?
We've asked the schools to communicate that, depending on what time they graduate. I think it just depends on what time your school's graduating is.
How much time do you need to allow to get to? I mean, that's what I'm saying. If it's literally five minutes from my house and 45 minutes with all roads open is squeaking in, I'm just wondering, what are we telling our families about how much time they do need to allow? Because a lot of these people are first-time graduates, and they're going to think 45 minutes is way overkill.
That's something that we'll work with. I'll work with the Coliseum and ask them to kind of help me with what they've been through the last couple of days with Winston-Salem State and Forsyth Tech. They did say that their graduations started on time, even though traffic was kind of hectic. So that was a good thing, but I'll work with them and communicate with the schools and have them get communication out with the families.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
So I guess do we, because I guess I'm thinking about it from the perspective of, obviously, for high school graduations, children, sometimes they drive themselves. And if it's, if adults are late, because I also had experiences where, you know, adults, you know, you leave your house in plenty of time, but it's not plenty of time, and you're late. But I think about the students who are kind of like, oh, I get, you know, they said to get there 45 minutes earlier, whenever, but I end up missed, like, I get there so late because I can't find parking, and now I'm missing my own graduate, you know what I'm saying? Like, I just want to make sure we're, you know.
Yeah. And they have a different, students and staff have a different entrance than guests. And so, they are supposed to follow that entrance during graduation practice so they know exactly where to go and where to park. Every school has a different parking area. Every school has a directional map and everything, and they have passes. So hopefully, they'll follow, they'll learn on rehearsal night so that they'll know during graduation, they need to go this exact way.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Clint Wilson, our Chief Officer of Student Services, will give us a family engagement update.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to give a family engagement update, and I have some of my colleagues here with me as well that will be presenting as we matriulate through the presentation. The family engagement team consists of several different departments. You have family engagement, you have our cares team, you have our Title I overview, you have our multilingual learners as well, and our gear-up family supports. The Family Engagement Department mission and vision, the overall goal is to ensure that we are supporting parents with the matriculation with their students through the K-12 system. And so, within the Family Engagement Department, there are four different tiers. You have our parent-family engagement coordinators, our family engagement parent academy, community support, and school support. So we have members of our cares team here that are represented, that represent each tier of the Family Engagement Department. One cares team member is over one specific entity. So as far as the parent-family engagement coordinators, those are parent assistants and parent-family engagement coordinators that work within our schools, our Title I schools, and they receive Title I funding. our Title I schools, and they receive Title I funding. They are, our CARES team works with them on professional development. They support them within their, their school day. They help them plan different events and avenues that they like to do for their schools, Title I fairs, things of that nature, to support the family engagement within their schools, work with PTSAs and so forth. Our family engagement workshops are our workshops that we offer usually in the evenings or during the day for our parents, to support them with whatever they need for their students. And there's a wide variety of workshops that we have given this year that would be shared in a little bit. Our community support, we have a CARES team member that regularly meets with our community. There are several different entities that he sits on to support our community so that he's aware. He also meets very regularly with our Community Support Director, Terry, to ensure that things are going well and there's an open-ended conversation when it concerns that. He also comes to our superintendents' parent advisor committees as well. And then our school support, we have a CARES team member that facilitates a lot of that. If there is a need for a school support, he's the one that, like, is the go-to person to support the schools when it concerns the parent engagement. And this is just the family engagement team members as it stands today. Myself, and then our four other CARES team members. They're school-based, they do a lot of things. Home visits, urgent transportation, in-school support, administration support, community support. They also work very, work very heavily with our area superintendents to support them as well. If there's a discipline issue or anything like that, they'll transport kids, they'll work in the community. There, there's a lot of things that they do, receiving food baskets, shoes for students, things of that nature, bikes and so forth. These are just the workshop topics that we've had this year. We partnered with Forsyth Technical Community College for their Adult Learners Informational Meeting. That was a day and night event. We did some back, back-to-school navigating resources. We worked with the Parent College Fair. We also had a financial wellness series that was one every month for our parents and our families to support them with money and credit and budgeting and protecting their identity and financial streams and scams and things of that nature. We've also had some, several things concerning mental health. It's okay not to be okay. And so so far, during the time of this presentation that I was, when it was first submitted, we had about eleven hundred participants, whether it was via online, live stream, or actually in person. And we're really finding that a lot of our parents are preferring the online version. I know this, our parents are busy. So we really like those, the fact that we have been doing a lot of live streaming when it concerns our family engagement. And then also, these are our professional development topics that we've had throughout the year for our parent family engagement coordinators and parent family assistants that work within the school. So they meet with us at least once a month and receive professional development. So foster, we had foster and diverse schools come to them. We've had goal setting at the beginning of the year. We had PTA engagement, Title I presentations, Project Hope, Behavior Supporting Intervention, the RISE programming that we have with our code and conduct and character. Action for Equity has also come to us. Latino Family Initiative Partnership has partnered with us as well. And then we had a foster and diverse schools update. And before I move on to Title I, because I'm representing that department as well too tonight, do you have any questions concerning our Family Engagement Department?
Board Member Watts?
Sure. Yes, no question, but again, accolades, because this is something, as we're entering our EOG season, EOC season, that does not get measured. But if we don't get kids to school, we don't get kids fed, if we don't take care of our kids, then we do not do well in EOG, EOC. So I commend the work that's being done by our CARES teams to support our young people and their families. Again, it does not show up in a school report card. But if this is not done correctly and properly with love and care, then we will have a deficit.
Yes, Board Member Barr.
Dr. Wilson, thank you for the presentation. You know, family engagement is something dear to my heart because of the upper bound program I went through. And you don't have to answer this now, but maybe come back. But here are a couple of questions I have. How do we measure the success? How do we measure the success of our family engagement? And what is it that we actually measure? So how do we measure the success and what are we measuring? And, oh, I think I had another question here. And you don't have to answer it now. As you're measuring different parts of the program, which part is your, your most effective part? Once again, you don't have to answer it now, but I'll see you next time, okay?
Thank you, okay. Let me just, I'm writing it down now, which... Before I move on, I would just like to say that a lot of this work that we have done, the effectiveness and things of nature, could not have been done without the, the flexibility of the CARES team. We've changed a lot of things and revamped things, and usually they were, you know, they were working with a different area, north, south, east, or west area. They continue to do that, and then they also took on these additional responsibilities to make sure that we are doing what's the best for our students, which is our engagement of our parents. So I'd like to commend them for the work that they have done and their... And so our Director of Title I Funding, Ms. Maugh, is not here today. She's under the weather. And so this is under Dr. Wilkins' department. And so she went through the slides with me and just had a couple of things to say. As far as some of the slides, Section 116 of Every Student's Decease Act outlines how schools should involve parents and families in their child's education. It focuses on creating partnerships where parents are actively involved in planning, reviewing, and improving school programs, particularly Title I programming. And so that sort of goes back to what I was saying earlier about our, about our parent family engagement coordinators that we have in a lot of our Title I schools. The positions supported through Title I funding are our parent assistants. And they support communication and partnership between a student's home and a student's academic needs. And then we also have our parent family engagement within schools, our parent family engagement coordinators. They partner with families and schools to develop opportunities for parents to become active participants in students, student academic experiences. So these positions, again, as I stated previously, we meet with them monthly to support the work that they do within the school by providing professional development as well as working with them within the school to create their own initiatives through PTA or through Title I Parent Nights or through any other initiative to support student success. And now I'm going to pass it over to our ML department.
So in our ML, Multilingual Learners Parent Engagement Team, we work in, with schools in conducting meetings, providing workshops, attending to school events, and other activities to promote and increase the multilingual learners', parent family engagement, and community involvement in our district. In our, in my department, we also assist families with power school information. Now, now we're going into another platform. So we are getting ready to, to do a lot of community outreach, to prepare our families and to inform the families about this new platform that we are about to use. We also assist schools and Wisdom Saloms of Forsyth County staff in communicating with families regarding any transportation concerns. We also help families with new applications, pre-K applications, summer school information, school locator, and we also provide interpretation services. In our district, we have four Spanish-speaking interpreters. And we have, we are actually using outside contractors for other languages. So far this school year, we have received over a thousand different requests for interpretations, and we have translated over two thousand pages in different languages. We also have a family literacy program. And we're actually coming back to present to the board on the twenty-seventh to bring more information about the family literacy program. We have different schools participating in a family literacy program. We have Easton Elementary School, Mineral Springs, Forest Park, Portland High School.
So GEAR Up stands for gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs. We currently serve thirteen schools. There are Flat Rock, East Forsyth Middle, Con Oak, Middle Springs Middle, Northwest, Paisley, Southeast, Waukataun Middle, Glen, Mount Tabor, North Forsyth, Parkland, and Winston-Salem Prep. We conduct parent involvement meetings, and we try to, the program from the start is about parent inclusion. It's a hallmark of the GEAR Up program. It's understood that many parents don't understand or don't know about how decisions are made for their students to go to college. They're not aware of the availability of, of programs, local, state, and federal programs and resources. And that's where GEAR Up comes in to fill the gap. As a result, as part of our program, we conduct parent, these parent-involved meetings. They're held twice a month. We further explain the purpose of the GEAR Up mission, discuss student and college career readiness, determine the needs of parents from the parent perspective. We talk about college financial aid sessions, enrich student, enrich student enrichment activities, and educate parents in advance of the child making a very important post-secondary decision. Most of our students, of course, we talk about the college path. GEAR Up includes parents by taking them on official college visits. For some parents, it's the first time they've ever been on a college campus. And the tours help them to gain the facts and opinions that they need to help their child make the right decision as they head to college. GEAR Up visits mostly UNC system schools. And during these college visits, we increase college awareness by allowing parents to visit various colleges of their interest, provide pertinent information straight to the parents. We don't, you know, by bringing the parents in, we don't have to run it through the students because you know a lot of times the information gets lost, right? So it's good to have those parents right there and being involved with the tour and being involved with the program. It allows parents to ask questions that are important to them rather than us feeding them information. Parents get an opportunity to ask questions and get their questions answered in a way that they can understand to make those decisions. And it gives parents a comfort level. If you don't have an experience with college or going to college, it's, it's very important that you gain that experience by being there, by being a part of the program, by seeing the college, talking to the college officials, make you more comfortable by sending your child off to the college experience. One of the things we don't talk about a lot in our program enough is the work with, that we would do with military. Although GEAR Up is commonly known for helping students and parents with college awareness, it's important to note that the GEAR Up program can play a role in assisting parents with understanding the benefits of military service and how that service can advance a student's education and career opportunities. Because, because military service can be a very viable path to receiving education and starting a career, GEAR Up works with parents to identify and connect with preferred branches of military, make parents and students aware of the opportunities for post-secondary education programs and resources for those interested in the military, and plan to collaborate with high school JRTC programs with base tours and presentations. Also, we help with the career path. GEAR Up also teams with the Forsyth Tech GEAR Up program to inform parents of the many education and career advantages associated with attending Forsyth Tech out of high school, including free tuition. Additionally, collaborating with Forsyth Tech GEAR Up allows us to give parents and students the opportunity to see facilities and technologies that are available to them through Forsyth Tech. Most parents are aware of the main Forsyth campus, not realizing there are other program-specific tech campuses across the county. We collaborate with Forsyth Tech regularly to introduce parents to, to career paths, inform parents of financial advantages of attending Forsyth Tech, organize tours. That would be tours to Maisy Woodruff Aviation Technology Lab, Transportation Technology Center and Innovation Center, and Forsyth Innovation Quarter, and explore possible careers through site visits at created, at experiences that we create with the local businesses. Other services we provide is ESL parent meetings. A lot of times our Hispanic parents, they, they want to, you know, meet separately. They feel more comfortable, and it gives them opportunity to ask questions that they have and provide, you know, the ways that they can understand so they don't get left out of the process through language barriers. We have parent volunteer opportunities. A lot of times, parents feel more empowered if they are able to volunteer and help. And we have student summer camp. And we say, you know, student summer camp, how is that something for parents? But if you had a child at home with you during the summer, you know a summer camp is a great thing to have. So, so that is a parent-provided service. And we also do community events. In closing, for a personal story and about GEAR Up. When I was growing up, I was a first-generation college student. And when I was growing up, my parents always told me, you're going to college, you're going to college, you're going to college. That was understood, no question, you're going to college. And so I get to my senior year in high school, and I go to my parents and I say, okay, I'm ready to go to college, what's the plan? And my father looks at me and says, the plan is, I'm going to get up, your mother's going to get up, and we're going to go to work like we always do. And you're going to go to that school and figure out how you're going to get to college. So, full circle, I'm glad to be involved with a program that's helping students find a way to college and careers. Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, Board Member Watts?
So Mr. Harder, I know you're fairly new in this role, so help me, and maybe not tonight, help me also explain the role Winston-Salem State University has in the GEAR Up grant. And also, how are we, what happens when the grant runs out? I know we can apply for a second grant, and so where are we in that process? And thirdly, when students are in our middle schools, there's no direct attendance pathway to them in high school. So how are we tracking our students who are in GEAR Up in middle school when they could go to ten to twelve different high schools in Forsyth County?
Is that a required answer now? Oh, okay, I was trying to make sure I kept up with all your questions, okay? I will address those, thank you.
Board Member Barr?
This question may sound similar, Dr. Wilson. Here we go. Concerning the GEAR Up, you know what, the next time someone present, I would like to know, how do we measure the effectiveness of the program? You know what, what are we measuring? And then, and this is a question that's part of the measurement. How many kids are actually going to college? And then I just want to see a lot of quantitative data because I know programs like this really, really make the difference. So maybe at the beginning of next year, just kind of get some information from you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do know that we do collect that data on a yearly basis. And also, at the end of the grant, we have to report that data back, so.
Thank you. I don't think we have any more questions. Thank you. Next, Dr. Chris Weichert, our Chief Human Resource Officer, will discuss the Budget Amendment and Transfer Number Twelve.
Good evening. Stand before you today to discuss the budget amendments and transfers from August twelfth to May twenty-fifth, or finally notice Budget Amendment Number Twelve. You'll notice on the amendments that it impacts, amendments will be additional, or in this case, actually a reduction in revenue for local, federal, capital, and our special revenue or other. If you just look at that one there, if you hold it right there for me, Kevin. This $774,000 reduction is our Article Forty-Six. And physical year twenty-four, the county's projection compared to what was collected, they didn't make, if you will, so we did have to revert that this physical year to chew it up. We didn't actually send the money back, they just reduced allotment that came to us. So when you look at the last page, you'll see our local allotment on the budget actually decreased due to this. As you go through the pages there, you can see a lot of these next ones are physical. As you go through the pages there, you can see a lot of these next ones are physical, are federal. These were monies, new monies have been allotted, monies have dropped, we've increased them and put them in their right account. Once we get to the middle there, that's when we start budget transfers, and that includes state, local, federal, capital, other. Only thing it doesn't include is child nutrition, and that's where you should see zeros because we're just moving monies between the purpose codes or object codes. I'll answer any questions to the best of my ability.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
So, Chris, I'd like a list. I mean, I'm not sure if you can get this or where you can pull it from, but is there a place where I can see every single PRC on state and what they're for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like that. Are there PRCs or the equivalent on the other pots of money like federal as well?
Yes, sir. So, okay. So each fund source has PRCs. The state, which is Fund III, and your federal, those PRCs are defined by the state or the federal government. For example, OO1 is your regular instructional positions. O50 in federal is Title I. That's the most common one we see from schools. Your local ones is a school-based decision, district decision on where you identify those PRCs. Most of them actually just mirror the state, is the way we have them set up. Fund VIII would be according to your grants. Each grant, depending on the grant, like for example, the Wallace Foundation grant has its own specific PRC in Fund VIII. The only three that are the same is your Medicaid reimbursement indirect and things as such. So we can get you those balances at the next finance meeting, if that's okay? I think that's next in two weeks, and I can get you a list of the different PRCs probably tomorrow.
Okay. That's what I was, thank you.
Board Member Kuhn.
So I've been struggling with this action item only because I don't know how, and I think it speaks to what Vice Chair Bohannon said, is that without knowing the PRC codes, without knowing what's budgeted for the PRC codes, I don't know if this is telling me something that's right or not. So I think we need something to help.
Yes, sir. So this right here is the transfers or the amendments. It's not the actual budget summaries, but we can get you that information.
Right, but I'm saying, I don't know with budget transfers, are we transferring from a PRC that's okay or not? You know, I mean, I just...
Fantastic question. So if I may, on the PRCs, you can only, for the most part, you, excuse me, at the state level, if you're transferring between PRCs, you'd see that in an ABC transfer, and it would probably be identified as an ABC transfer. So you could see it going from like, I'll give you an example, we moved some instructional supply money, PRC 61 earlier this year, to OO3 non-instructional support. And you would have saw it go from that PRC to that PRC. But I think I hear you saying this, how do you know if there's enough money in that account and then going into that account? The system will not allow you to go into deficit as far as transferring. I know, as soon as I said that, I knew I was gonna get some chuckles. Let me rephrase that. As far as the budgeting amount, you can't move money that's not budgeted. I didn't say anything about expenses. All right, so I'm talking on the budget side, not expenses. So you can't transfer money from a, that's not budgeted, to another account. The state, the system will not allow that. I didn't say anything about expenses yet. Okay?
Thank you. Vice Chair Bohannon.
So also, Chris, can I get the, can I get the account schedule too? Like, I think that contains like the object codes, the program codes, purpose codes, like those things?
Would you like the chart of accounts?
Yep.
Sure.
Thank you.
That's an easy download from DPI.
Any other questions? Yes, Board Member Barr.
You know what, I just think from, you know, moving forward, you know, whoever presents, whether it's you or when we hire our new CFO, we just gotta make sure our standard is, is that all this information is explained in layman's terms, you know? For example, can you go back to the first slide? And maybe everyone knows, but, and I know that you live and probably sleep this area, but just for us commoners, like when, you know, like when the general public hears Article 46, sometimes I wonder, do they understand what Article 46 means? And then when they see, I think I heard somebody say, "No." And then when I see a negative 774-948.98, do they understand what that means? So just for our sake, can you just back it up just for a little bit? And just, let's just do number one and tell the audience what does Article 46 mean and why do we have a negative?
That's right. Okay, no problem. So Article 46 is revenue from sales tax from last fiscal year, 2324 school year, or what we call FY24. Supplements are any salaries for instructional staff. Article 46 is for teacher or licensed staff. That's why it's a 5100 in salaries. A supplement is considered part of your salary as far as the purpose code there. The, since the revenue did not make, the county asked us to reverse to them $774,948, and they wanted the 98 cents as well. So we had to give that back to them. So that's why it's in the negative. We decided to reverse it back to them. So when we did that, we had to deduct it from that budget code just to make our books balance. I promised, I did my best at the layman's terms, and I promise I don't easily sleep this.
Thank you, thank you. But once again, I just kinda think because we, you know, where we are, we're just gonna have to do, I do, just to say, break it down. No, it's not you, but...
No, I understand. So if you go to the next one, if you'd like to give me one more example, that next one's your 21st Century Grant. That's PRC 110, and I do have some, this is new funding for this fiscal year. You know, federal monies don't always drop in July. Most come in October, and as late as sometimes it's February. So you can see there that 5,300 salaries, that's what we're paying the folks to work 21st Century. The next three red codes, you know, the next two red codes, just go, excuse me, employee provided benefits, that's your retirement and your FICA. Then you can see you have supply money. The 6,000 codes would be your administrative costs. So your 21st Century Director, that six tells you it's administrative in front of 6,300.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Our last discussion item, Tricia McManus, our superintendent, and Dr. Chris Weigert will present the FY 2025-2026 budget request.
Thank you. And Chris will be closer to the middle mic, so if he needs to get up, he can do it. He can do it from there. So yes, so this is, you all have seen, I think a couple of weeks ago, I presented some of these slides. I'm gonna go quickly through some of them. I can't remember which meeting it was, also in the board, last board workshop on the budget. So the only new slides are getting into more detailed information that we've literally gotten in the past week as we've worked specifically with the consultants. And so I'm going to go through, it's a lot of pages at the beginning, starting with our district vision and mission and our current strategic plan goals. I know those will be changing in the future. As last year, we have five key investment priorities. Those have not changed. So that's what those are. There's a message about our four priorities. And then we have some student data, and I think some of this data speaks to some of the comments tonight. And I completely agree that, you know, we are receiving funding based on a number of students, not considering the needs of the students. And I think that that is, as we look at our data, I think that is something that's really important to think about because it's not just about raw numbers of kids, in my opinion. And so, yes, we've decreased in enrollment. You can see the makeup of our student body. You can see the number of students now being served through exceptional education programs, students with an IEP. And there's been an increase in these numbers over time, as we can see on this chart. In this chart, and it's funny because the labels, it doesn't look as drastic, but it's actually more drastic when you look at your number of students. But we have our students that are multilingual learners, receiving services have gone to 8,799 in the 2425 school year. You can look at those increases. When you look at our economically disadvantaged percentages, that has continued to rise. All of that data is to say that this is, even though we are allotted by numbers, the staff we have has been to support the evolving and ever-changing needs of our students. And so I agree with everything that was said earlier, is that something needs to change when it comes to what we're receiving to serve per pupil, to serve each of our students. And other things should be taken into account instead of every person just being counted the same because service is different. When we get to our grade level proficiency, you can see that we've continued to make improvements with the resources that we've had. We've increased graduation rate, or maintained or increased in the one year to the highest we've ever had. Our level of chronic absenteeism, which is, or students with no attendance issues has decreased. Chronic absentee, I mean, has increased. Chronic absenteeism has decreased. That's the work of a lot of people that are working within our schools. If you look at the next slides, I'm not gonna go through them specifically. There are many of them. It shows that we have exceeded district pre-pandemic trends. We were recognized for these, this growth as a school district, and all these charts explain that growth. And this came directly from DPI. And then when you look at staff data, so from this, this shows our position counts by funding source. This is without vacancies, and this is very important to know as we think about our projections and accurate information. These numbers were based on, because they were end of year, they were based on payroll. And so when you look at each of these years, it was based on about March payroll, but it did not include vacancies. I think that's very important because not projecting as if you're fully staffed can become problematic. When we think about, and it is problematic, because we filled more vacancies this school year at about 100. And so if you're thinking, you need to project with, if you're projecting without vacancies or without thinking about every single person, if they're all filled, that's gonna be more expensive. That's gonna be more funding needed for that. And so that is, when we get into our next year's, for the request for next year, it is going to be as if we were fully funded, meaning every position filled. We've been running each year, you know, last year we were at a 90%, this year we had been at about a 97% fill rate. You know, other years, like post-pandemic, we had 2,300 vacancies each year, and that decreased this school year. So when you think about projections and making sure they're right, it's gotta be, if you're fully staffed, in the event you are. So that's just something to remember when we get into our projection. Here's a little bit about our teachers' experience levels. Of our 4,329 teachers, we have 3,146 with six to 30 years of experience. And so that's great. We have lots of experience and incredible teachers within our school district. That's new teachers and our veteran teachers. This shows where we are now with our local supplement. We are ranked nine. I know that it is a goal of our, or it was written into, when we first got Article 46, that we wanted to stay within, the county wrote into their, I can't remember what it's called, but that they wanted to stay within the top five always. So this does need to be, continue to be looked at. I'm not gonna get into the details of these. People have seen these charts over and over in many of the many workshops, and they're all in there posted. But these are all the expenses by fund for school year 2024, and you can see the descriptions of what is paid for. And so I'm just gonna go through these, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on that, but you can see what we spent on state, local, federal, and the total expenses for FY 2024. See, I'm not gonna break that down. It's all there. I think what is, this shows you local expenses over the years, and you can see, you know, salaries have continued to increase. And that is not just because a ton more people were added. That really is because pay increased. More positions filled each year, pay increases, and benefits increases each year. And that's part of why those expenses went up. When you look at the non-personnel cost, you can also see, we have, we tried to decrease that in last school year's budget. But you can see that there's, there've been increases in several things, utilities, charter schools. We've tried to cut back in certain areas, like in purchase services and other things wherever we could make cuts. We've also been working to get grants. We have actually 124 total grants worth of $17 million, and we continue to seek new funding to support the work that our people are doing in our schools every day. So now let's look at the budget, the budget request. So here is basically the objective of this 2026 budget request. And it really is to make sure that funds continue to be directed to teachers and students, and not just teachers, but staff and students, staff that are supporting students. And that are, we are funding our district, our investment priorities that were already outlined, and that we present a balanced budget. I think that's very important as we move forward, that we have to be very specific on every single person and their pay code. We're gonna talk about that in a minute. And that our budget to the county is balanced. Because in the case of last year, when we asked for more and we didn't get it, there comes a reconciliation time that has to happen if you don't get your full request. And if people are included in that, that is a problem because we don't get that funding until June. So I think one of the things tonight is about making sure what we are presenting is a balanced budget. And so again, I said, part of that is being fully, making sure that our estimates are being fully staffed. Not with 100 vacancies, not with 200 vacancies, but every vacancy filled. And then every position directly tied to a funding source. And we started with the funding formula this year, and I'll say, and I agree that we can keep asking for more funding, but this formula has allowed us to actually say, okay, what can we do even with non-personnel costs? What can we eliminate? One, contracts are absolutely not mission critical right now as we're trying to balance our budget and to maintain financial stability, to create financial stability for the district. So basically, here's what we have to start with, with this budget. 180 in local, about 385 in state, and about 50 million in federal. Hopefully, federal continues to be at that level. But these are our, this is what we've heard at this point so far, for a total of about 615 million. What I've done on this slide is actually show some of the investment priorities. When you think about core instruction, obviously, it's teachers. You can see non-personnel and non-personnel cost. This budget, in one of the workshops, we actually showed you when it says contracted services, what is that? I mean, a lot of those are things that keep us up and running. There is, there's not, in this next budget, as you all saw in all the workshops we produced for you, line by line, there's not a lot of extras within this budget request going into this school year. You can see the next one. I'm not gonna read the slides to you. You can just see some of the things that are funded. So this next part is something new, and this is why it took till today pretty much to make sure that these numbers are accurate because we wanna make sure any numbers being presented to the board and to the public are completely accurate. And so this shows us what the state provides us, what the federal provides us as far as personnel. This is all about personnel and position management. And what are the other state or local, what has to be picked up? With other state sources, there are only two, and that, those are your at-risk dollars. And what is the other one called, Chris? I can't remember.
Managed school funding, often it's called Leandro because PRC 24 came after the first court hearing in Leandro.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not like full funding in Leandro. But anyway, so if you look at this right now, you can see that we have to fund 350 positions above what we're given on state. And then federal, federal is where we make decisions on what positions are gonna be funded on a funding source outside of state. You can look at instructional support staff, your classified staff, your administration, central office. So I'm not gonna read them all to you, but you can see trades are all completely funded on our local dollars. They're not funded on any other, any other source. And so when you look at that, and then you look at the overages, what we've done here is put, here's how much, how many people that was, and how much is that overage cost? And so that is where districts have to say, okay, here's what the state's giving you. Here's what you can put on federal with the limited resources you have there. And here's now what is left over that you need to either put on one of those two PRCs. And those PRCs, I think one of them is about 14 million at risk last year. I think it's gonna be less next year. And the other one that Chris mentioned, how much was that one? 2.5 million. So we're not talking about, oh, there's great, two more PRCs that we can put a bunch of people on. So really, the bulk of that ends up having to come on local. So really the bulk of that ends up having to come on local. So when you look at this, the total cost with teacher and administrator supplements, and that's principals and assistant principals, our total personnel then, not on state PRCs costs us about 100, not on, I'm sorry, not on these two state PRCs, but on all state funding is about 158,596,923. So here's what I'm going to share as we go into this cost, into this next request. It's very important. I wanted to put this tonight so that we are completely transparent with what we're facing and that we need to come up with solutions and that we are going to bring our folks to the table because we have, we, we do need more savings again unless, unless we were to get more. And honestly, with the budget form, with the funding formula, it is at 180. So if you look at this, it's about 158 that need to come on other funding sources. We have the 12 million we can use for those two PRCs I mentioned, so, so we can put people on those which we have. Remember this position controls is putting each person onto a specific funding source, each position. And that is also your vacant, I mean, even if you have a vacancy right now, that position, if it's a teacher, has to be assigned to a funding source, the whole. And so with that, other projected revenues, we had, we get about 9 million. That's the average the last three years. And so we're going with the average and revenues that you can put more positions on. And so the count, in our county request, it's 180, one that the personnel part of that is 124. And so we, with that, if we're going to balance our budget, we would need to, to save, have some kind of budget savings of, of about 13 more million dollars. And that is to, to balance, to go into next year with a balanced budget. Now, something very important, and that is if, and this is with, and, and people quoted some numbers earlier around savings, we have actually done savings going into next year around staffing. And that was for a total of about 17,960 dollars of savings. And so again, if we're going to have to free up those 13, that 13 million, we need to figure that out very soon. I put dates on there, like between May 14th, May 30th. We need to figure out, you know, unless we were going to ask for that 13 and keep everything as is, that would not be a balanced budget if it was not approved. And at this point, we, we need to make sure that we are able to get the district back on track and, and go forward with a balanced budget. If you end up having vacancies throughout the year, if you end up being 97% staff and you have 100, 150 vacancies, that would be money that you would not spend, not say, oh, we can do that because we have lap salaries, because that is, we're trying to correct all that's happened. That would be money that you could save. 100 vacancies, if that, I mean, and, and the goal is to fill them all, but if you had that many, depending on how much that person costs, if it's a, if it's a licensed staff with benefits at 80,000, that's about 8 million dollars right there. So in other words, the goal is to be balanced and start to be able to put money back into fund balance and, and, and right, right the ship for next school year. This request is about next school year. So with that said, these are the, the positions that we have saved. The, the central office ones were 81. The 148 positions were done through the allotment process and that included everything across the board allotment process. That was already saved. Non-personnel savings, we've saved 5,397 for a total going into next year of 23 million. So that plus the 13 is what we need to save to have a balanced budget next year. And if you have vacancies to start adding back into fund balance. With that said, this shows a little bit about non-personnel request and we can go back and load all the documents. We've given you all lots of documents that outline what does this even mean? There were department, by department. And then our proposed funding formula, the, when, when the board was with the county manager and they shared the different funding formulas, the one that provided us with the best, with the most was funding, was scenario A, and that would give us 180,391, which is about 7 million more than last year's budget. That's about 7 million more of a request. So basically we have 124 million in salary costs, the 65 non-personnel, that would include charter, which is about 12 million. So you can take 12 million off the top of that and that's what you would have for your non-personnel cost. And so the county scenario A is at 180, miscellaneous revenues are at nine, so we're at about 189 there, but the actual request for the county, it would be actually what the funding formula shows. So you can see, we, I, what I will say, and I, I want to close with and then open up for questions, comments from the board, is that I completely agree with continuing to advocate for more funding based on the needs of our students. Absolutely, that has got to happen. It's been disappointing to me that for the last five years, that hasn't really had an impact. And I'm not saying we should stop. I think we need to keep it going and do more to, to advocate. I, I just, it's, it's to, to educate a child, I don't know what someone thinks that costs, but it costs more than people think. And to provide the adequate resources. When I go into schools every day, I don't see a bunch of extra people standing around, none. I see people working with kids, I see people running ragged, I see people doing whatever it takes. And so at the end of the day, you can see how many positions, based on what we have now on our books, it would take. And we don't, we, the local funding, it's, it's, unless we got 13 million more in the local funding, we have to make the decisions about what we need to eliminate. And I'm not saying it needs to be positions, it needs to be 13 million dollars of something. And so here are my recommended next steps in the next couple of weeks, and that's host a series of meeting with stakeholders. That could be FCAE at the table, principals, district leaders, people to actually get input on what are these ideas? There are a lot of people with ideas that have been coming forward and I think we need to listen to those and see what, what, what we can come up with. There is another workshop on the 20th that will be advertised very soon with the board to discuss these savings plans and gain a better understanding, not only of what we need to do for savings for next year, but any overages for this year. The consultants are working now to try to figure out what exactly were the overages this year. And if, if, if you think about the approach that was used for next year and what we need to save, this year is a concern and we, we're going to be hopefully getting information soon about what we're going to do for the current school year. This is for next year and getting us back on track next year. I think that continue working with a consulting firm. Now, this is up to the board. If, if that, you know, as you get an interim, if you want to start, if you want to work with them, but if you get someone with lots of experience, that may not even be needed. If they have, if they understand our, the PRCs, if they understand position controls, if they understand how all of the things work together, if they understand how to forecast and understand North Carolina finance, I think they might be just fine, but if not, somebody needs to come in. Plan opportunities for community feedback throughout next year. I've heard from community members that want to be part of the solution, that want to provide feedback, those opportunities need to happen. Work closely with DPI to monitor state spending. That is one thing that has helped with our consultants right now is they have a direct connection to DPI and they have lots of credibility and that's helping us. Work with the state auditor. One of the things they said is that they want to help create a dashboard and they want, and part of working with us is to actually figure out what a dashboard, a public facing dashboard could look like with finances. And what we said is perfect. Use our data, you can have all of it, look at every single thing we're doing, put it out there. There's nothing that, that is, that needs to be hidden when you are actually using your, your funding to support your employees so they can support students. And also the CFO, and this is something you all have asked for, this has to happen with the interim CFO and when you get a permanent one, is provide a financial report at the first BOE meeting of each month for the school board and public. That is very clear on budgets to actuals, what, what was your budget, what have you spent and just get lots of clarity, data that you need at your fingertips and data that we all need at our fingertips to make the very best decisions. So with that, there are some things in the, in the background information that is part of this and I'll open up for questions.
Any questions? Yes, Board Member Keen.
My question is about the BOE workshop. I know that there had been some discussion about us needing time for some other things. Was that changed again?
This one was going to be, this one was in the books on that next Tuesday. It was going to be about fostering diverse schools originally, but because of these topics, we were going to change it to, to be a discussion that if you need the time for something else, then we can figure out another day as well.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
But, so, so, but that's no, that meeting originally was, was planned to discuss fostering diverse schools, but we've now, that's not the priority right, right now. Yeah. So we, we may utilize that time for another topic or we might utilize that time for a potential other meeting. I just wanted to make sure we're transparent about that.
You all can tell us what, if, if, if that meeting, if that was already in the calendar for a different topic, if you don't, if you want, we just need to post it the 48 hours before with what is the topic? So that may not be the topic, but it, whatever you want to be on that posting, we just need to get that out 48 hours in advance.
Yes, Board Member Watts.
Mr. Man, as you mentioned a phrase, mission critical, and I think we all agree that's where we are. Can you address the, the issue that where we are and the work's being done to quote, attract students back into our school district so that we are not paying 12 million dollars? I know there's some works already being done for next year, so can you elaborate what some of those works are at this point?
Yeah, so Dr. McMillan is leading the charge with actually, she's already gathered all of the names of students that have gone, we have access to those that have gone into charter schools. I'm not, I don't think we have access to all of the other ones, but we do for certain schools and we're just doing a, a campaign outreach. I think that, that the best beside, like a, it's, it's personal outreach is what it's going to take here and also getting folks back into schools to see the, the great things that are happening, you know? And, and that was very evident in all of the see for yourselves, what we offer in our schools. And in my opinion, it is unmatched with other entities and we need people to see that. So I, it's a, the plan is a personal outreach to families that have made other decisions. And I'm not, I talked to some parents about this and one mom said to me, well, I've, I chose, I chose like a religious based school for certain reasons and I'm not condemning, people have to make choices for their families, but if it really is about, we need to get to the root cause of why you left and then bring them back in to see it. It's a personal, that the, the campaign is a personal touch campaign to actually find out from families, you know, what made you do that? Because some of our charter schools, you know, when charter schools opened, they were, they were like a, a specialty type of school that might've been something different, but that's not the case anymore. They're, they're basically schools and I feel like what we are offering in our schools and the level of instruction and the level of opportunity and access to so many amazing resources and other, and people, that I think we just, it's about bringing them back and having them see that. So yeah, Dr. McMillan is leading that effort.
Board Member Crowley.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on the budget and giving us the higher level view of it. Is there a line item budget divided by department that we can access? I, I think that would really help us see, especially if we're going to be tasked with cutting 13 more million from it. It really would help to see the granular.
Yeah, and you, you, we, we gave, we, you received that at one of the, the meet, the, the workshops, but we have like four of them, so we'll give that back to you. Yeah, you received it by department and then you received it.
No, line item.
You mean the, you mean what the line?
Like a line item?
So in contracts, which exact contracts? Yeah, that was in there, but I'll get it back to you again.
No, like line item by department, meaning every, every code, every expense and how much it is, every, on the entire budget?
Okay, yep.
Okay.
We can do that.
I mean, that's something that we had several years back that helped us understand where all the money goes and, and the only way you can produce those budget to actuals is, is those line items by department and, and so that everybody can be accountable for what's been budgeted to them.
The, the, the department budgets for non-personnel costs have been very much reduced across the board and there are some things you cannot reduce. When you get to utilities, you cannot do that. When you get to, obviously you can't reduce the charter expense. We, we can by bringing kids back. When you look at other things like in your, in your capital, obviously that's separate, can't reduce that. But there's things like even in Kevin's technology budget that keep things running across the district and those are, those are costly items, but it's hard, there's, you'll, you'll, you'll see the reductions, anything that might've been a lot of extra, we've reduced and down greatly, but we will give that to you. And then also by the, the state and federal, in one of the workshops, we broke down the federal ones by line. We gave you title one, title two, title four and every expense, we gave that to you at a workshop as well. So you would see what those expenses are too, but we can send all that back out, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. To that point that Leah just made, I think, I heard some folks mentioned some programming that was cut and like, I, I do not recall seeing that. I don't recall seeing that we cut this program, this program, this program. And so I think that's what I want to see. I want to see all the programs that were cut or changed, lowered, all that. Because I think to Leah's point, that's where I want to see line item. I want, I want to see all of it.
Yep. We can give you that. We, we kept, we did not, we can't touch anything that will be supporting core instruction, but the supplemental resources that we, we, we added to, which have been amazing, we added during ESAR. We kept them last, we kept them. There's not a, a funding source unless we're going to cut 1.6 million of something else. So like those are the decisions. So what staff is charged with is looking for open source materials, looking for things that we can do that are not costing one contract for 800,000 for this resource. I mean, it, all of those additional resources that are amazing were added when we had ESAR dollars. And so yes, we'll get you the list of what those are and also what could replacements be.
Yeah, I think it's important for us to actually know because if the community's coming to us and saying one thing and we don't have the information, I think that that makes it very difficult for us to make decisions.
Yep.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
I, I was just going to say, I, I agree with the premise. Like I, I also think that what we have, what we have asked is to prioritize people in these decisions. So I think what you've done is you've made the decision to prioritize retaining people in lieu of spending these, these dollars on these, on the supplemental materials. It's just that, you know, when someone comes up and they say, you know, I, what's happening with this specific thing because I heard that it was cut, we just need to be able to reference a list to be able to know why it was cut and, or that this is a part of this list and this is the reason why. Because I think most people would understand if we cut something because we, it was either a choice between cutting a supplemental program or cutting jobs, I think people would probably choose to, to retain employment. So it just is about us being able to answer those questions.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We're moving on to action items now. We have 11 to consider. Our first action item is to consider approval of the FY 2025, 2026 budget request. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Vice Chair Bohannon, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Sorry, I did have a question. It's, the budget request is still 13 million over, right? So it's not a balanced?
Right. Can I jump? This is about asking, are we going to ask for the 180 on, on Thursday? Are we asking for 180? The, the funding formula, that's the budget, that's the request.
Right. Right.
Or are we going to add something to that for our ask?
Also, just as a reminder, by state law, we are required to ask for the allocation by May 15th. Am I correct? I'm correct, thank you. So, the question was, by law, we are required to ask the county for our, our allocation by May 15th, and that's correct, based on what our attorney said.
So, this is, this is the request for the funding formula? Funding Formula A. Right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor. Opposed? Motion passes 7 to 2. Next, consider approval of the FY 2025 budget amendment and transfer number 11 briefed at the April 28, 2025 Finance Committee meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Opposed? Okay. Excuse, motion passes 8 to 1. Next, consider approval of the class-size waiver request for the second grade at Jefferson Elementary School. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
So, I have a motion by Board Member Kuhn, a second by Board Member Miller. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the class-size waiver request for the first grade at Spies Elementary School. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? So, I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Kuhn. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the FY 2025 North Carolina Building Capital Fund Debt Service 2013 Refunding Lottery Funds. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion?
I just want to remind everybody that this is the state lottery money that we have a verbal agreement with the county commissioners that we would use toward buildings that have already been built for us, and this helps retire some of that debt.
Yes. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor. Okay, opposed? Motion passes 7 to 2. Next, consider approval of the remaining state allocated low-well supplement for the K-12 teachers. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? So, I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Barr. Any discussion?
I have some, oh. Go ahead, I'll yield to Brown.
Board Member Brown Gaither.
Okay, I do have some questions about that, and I was looking back over, and I tried to, to calculate where we were having some issues. And when I looked at it, we gave, gosh, I hope I can find it really quickly. Sabrina, you might need a good, no, okay, here we go. So, we paid out 95190 to 4,173 employees, and so if you deducted that from the 5.288 million, we were looking at having approximately 1,315 dollars, 315, 72130. And if we take that same number of employees, it looks like our payout should be a little bit more than what we are listing, because we're listing 25975, and it seems like it's $55.54 less. And that was my question.
And mine was, the math doesn't math, so can you help me?
I will, we will maximize the funds. I did not do the math. This was submitted prior to me being put to the agenda item. However, that's, the payout they were talking about is with the benefits in retirement and FICA. So, first, I just want all the employees to hear that, so they know it's less, because someone's going to go in December, I didn't make 958, I got 750. We will make, we will take every eligible employee, we're going to divide it by who we have currently on payroll, and then that will be the payout to max out, maximize PRC 71. We are not going to give a, one red cent back to the state where we can give it to an employee. So, I don't, I apologize, Board Member Brown Gaither, I didn't have a chance to run those numbers. I did clarify the, we did adjust the agenda a little just to make sure it was clear what the employees would get. But we'll, before we run the pay.
The final numbers?
We'll run the final numbers. My assumption is the staff used the previous number, but I can tell you right now I have more vacancies due to a hiring freeze than I did before, so, you know, we'll make sure we won't give a red cent. And once we get those exact numbers, I'll email the board, and as well as the staff will get an email from us telling us what they can expect.
I have one other question, too. One more question?
Yes, yes.
I want to make sure I understand who all falls under this low-well supplement, because at one time I thought it was just certified teachers, but then when I read, it was a lot more, and we could use it for more items than that.
Sure, yes, yeah, we could, there's a lot of variance in that.
Right.
It's any licensed employee who, as a school, or any licensed employee. So, I always like to, I'm going to use a budget code here, and I'm going to, I'm going to say what those budget codes are, so that I don't talk, that it's any object code between 121 and 135. So, that could include your regular education teachers, your magnet coordinators, your district instructional coaches, or licensed teachers, media center specialists, or licensed employees, guidance counselors, social workers, speech pathologists, psychologists, and so on. It does not include assistant principals, principals, classified staff. Unfortunately, it does not include pre-K teachers.
Right.
All right, please, please feel free to write your congressman or your legislator, and, or any central office staff.
And so, that's how we got that 4,173 when we gave the?
That's correct, yeah. I, I, sure, correct. And typically, we have a max, what we can give out, according to legislation, we can only give out 1,000, gross to the teacher, 1,204.
Okay.
All right, and they did change it where we can use it for anyone, any teacher regardless of funding source. That was not the way when they first did it.
Okay.
So, I have a motion, I have a second, I've had discussion, all in favor. Oh, yes.
Yes. But I really would like to have accurate numbers before I vote on things. This is hard for me, because I don't want to vote no against it, because it's for our teachers, but it's hard for me to vote yes for something when I don't have accurate numbers.
Once again, all in favor. Motion passes 8 to 1. Next, consider. 7 to 2, sorry, who was opposed? Sabrina, I'm sorry. 7 to 2. Next, consider approval of the county allocated market study pay increase, the one-time pay, payment for the TAs. Do I have a motion? So, I have a motion by Vice Chair Bohannon. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Second.
A second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Yes. Absolutely. Yes, Board Member Watts.
Someone help me understand, I, I think our TAs need the funds, but currently, where are we pulling funds from to support this effort?
I can speak to that. These were, this is what the county gave us, that they said last year they wanted to give us 500,000 toward market rate increases, and when we, we, they said, well, where will you start? Because we originally, they were originally going to be a million, then they changed it to 500. Where would you start? And we said it would be teacher assistance, because we had not addressed them, like, we've addressed people over time, and that's a group that had not been. And so, we started with that. So, this is basically a one-time payment, that's it, for, basically with restricted dollars from the county that they, they expect us to spend that by the end of the school year.
And my question, I want to make sure, because I know everything previous, we said it include, it included, it didn't include like the applicable taxes, and I'm assuming whatever this amount is, they're going to take out the taxes and all of that. Am I right? Okay, want to make sure. Thank you.
Deanna?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Board Member Miller.
So, if it's restricted, is it, is it actually sitting there right now in the account, ready to spend? It is? It is?
They did submit it from what the county manager told me.
The money was, forgive me, I don't remember the date, but whenever we got the reimbursement for the laptops, the money came in that same time. If you recall, CFO Krantz went a couple times in front of the county commissioners to discuss this, as well as to the board. So, I want to say it was February, late February, early March, but I, I'd have to look that up to see when the exact time it was distributed to the district.
Okay. Any other discussion? So, I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor. Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the Glen High School gym HVAC installation contract. This was briefed on 4/16/2024 at the Building and Grounds Committee meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve, second.
So, I have a motion by Board Member Kuhn, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the Parkland High School bleacher and floor renovations update from the bid withdrawal. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? So, I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Kuhn. Any discussion?
Question?
Yes.
Okay, so, because our initial bid that we had, that we were going to accept when it came to our committee meeting, has now withdrawn, and now we have to go with a higher bid. And so, the remaining difference of those two is 72,040. And is that all coming from this SCIF? Do we have the funds there?
It is. It is all coming from the SCIF grant that was allocated specifically and only to Parkland for athletic improvements.
Okay, I wanted to ask that, because I know it's a difference of 72,000.
And the lowest bidder withdrew his bid because he could, he misposed, transposed a number and could not commit to doing the work at that price.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion, all in favor. Thank you, that motion passes unanimously. Consider approval of the change order for S and M E contract for Brunson Elementary School. Do I have a motion? So, I have a motion by Vice Chair Bohannon. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Board Member Watts. Discussion? Vice Chair Bohannon.
Thank you for staying around, Ms. Richards. So, a, a, a meeting was referenced during public comment. What meeting, are you aware of that meeting?
I am aware of the meeting. So, that meeting was, I believe, April 29th. So, we had a public hearing period back in January and February, where the Brownsfield Agreement documents were published at the library Brunson Elementary and Central Office for review. During that time period, one individual in the community submitted a request for a public hearing. That hearing was held April 29th. No staff members were made aware of that date or that time or invited to that meeting, which is also why the board was not invited to that meeting, because we did not have information to share with you.
Okay, thank you. And then, the other question I had was around the, the, kind of, the levels, like, have the levels changed at all in terms of from when the board decided to buy the property versus now?
No, so the levels have not changed. So, a significant amount of time has lapsed since the first time that we pursued this property. And so, if you go back to the initial 2016 bond, and you look at the time span that Brunson should be built, students should actually be in that new school today. And so, when the initial property was purchased, we did several rounds of testing, and that is what the grant that was referenced was for. We did expense $200,000 roughly of that grant for the Phase 1 portion. We had to return those funds, because we were not able to complete the additional phases of the work, because as a district, there was a lapse in time when we started that work and purchased that property before coming back and actually approving work to continue on that site. Did that answer your question?
It did, thank you.
Can you, can you talk just ever so briefly about the soil, bringing that in and the reason for it?
Sure, so, part of the Brownsfield Agreement is that every step of the way, we have to test soil. And so, at times when you are grading that property to be able to lay that foundation, we discover different things that are in that soil, which is part of the reason that it's eligible for a Brownsfield. That soil gets tested, and depending on which contaminants are in that soil, that soil may be removed, or the material may be removed to mitigate those issues from the property. And so, here, we, we discovered issues in the soil that we were testing as we were going, and so, new soil needs to be brought in. And as part of the Brownsfield Agreement, we also have to test the new soil that is coming in to be able to put that down. That was not foreseen, which is the reason for the change order, and the change order can be pulled up, Kevin, I think, if you want. But I do believe earlier it was referenced that that change order was for $100,000. It is not, it's for $30,000. And so, the reason it's coming to the board is because the initial contract in the board approval with SNME was around 70,000. This change order puts them at 100,000, which is why it must come back to you for final approval, and policy also states that change orders come before the board.
Any other questions? Yes, Board Member Miller?
Yes, do we actually have the Brownsfield Agreement now? Has that come through?
We do not. And so, as a result of the meeting that was held for the public hearing, one of the requests was that the diagram that I believe the board, that the board received this from what I sent last week, Ms. McManus? It was a PowerPoint, and there was the document that was shared during the public hearing. Okay. And so, on the initial document, it only referenced residential contaminants, not commercial graded contaminants. And so, DEQ recommended that that plot be changed to reference all of those. They've made that change, and from what we are hearing from DEQ and our attorneys is that we should have that agreement in hand by the June 10th meeting to be able to get signature and execute the agreement.
Any other questions? So, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor. Opposed? Motion passes? Motion fails, excuse me, 7 to 2. Motion fails, 7 to 2. Next, consider approval of the financial consulting contract with Hill Consultants. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? So, I have a motion by Board Member Barr, I have a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, Board Member Miller?
I, I see how all of that unfolded, but the reality of it, should we have voted on this before we went ahead and contracted with them? I mean, I've heard everything surrounding it, but I've never heard a clear-cut answer. Should the board have already voted on this before we implemented this?
No, I, no, Lauren, I think she's, she's referencing this item, not the previous. She's referencing the Hill.
Sorry.
I asked permission for the first 25, which, if we could fund 25, which doesn't have to come to the board. I asked permission, and then put it on this agenda for the full amount.
So, let me, let me, I need to, let me just clarify something. So, the superintendent does not have to ask for permission to enter into an agreement for up to $25,000.
Gotcha.
So, the superintendent notified us that she would be proceeding, because the chair and the vice chair don't have the ability or authority to authorize the superintendent to do a thing, okay? I think that's important to, to recognize. And then, the, what happened is, we needed, because of urgency, to go ahead and, and begin the work, but we knew that the board would need to approve a contract for the larger amount over the 25. So, that's what happened.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that, and thank you for doing that, Vice Chair Bohannon, because I want to make sure we did it right, and it was all by the books, okay?
Board Member Kuhn.
So, you're saying that you both, Chair and Vice Chair, you were alerted to this and gave permission?
It wasn't about giving permission, per se. She was able to do that for the 25.
Right, but you were alerted. Right, but you were alerted by her, is what you're saying. Like she came to you and said, I'm going to do this, and y'all said, yes, that's fine, we understand because of the urgency. Is that what you're saying happened?
Yes, and shortly after that, so was the rest of the board.
I don't remember getting an email about this, no. I found out about, no, no.
So you had no earthly idea?
No, I'm not saying until right now. But when there was a contract that I did not, there was an agreement that happened that I did not know about until later.
And is the.
The 25,000, she, I'm just trying to clarify. I get that she has permission to do that, but what was stated was she came to the board, Chair and Vice Chair, and said it was urgent, and y'all said, let's do it. So I'm just trying to clarify that that is what happened because that was not what was communicated.
Madam Superintendent, please walk through the timeline of the day you first met with these consultants up to today for clarification. Because, because at this point, we just need to make sure that we're clear about it.
Yes, so the first day I met with them was Tuesday, the 29th. Their scope of work came on the May 1st, and that is when I reached out to our legal counsel to see if, you know, I need to put this on a board meeting, but there is urgency around knowing what is happening? What, what, what can I do? And so that is when she, Deion told me, our legal counsel said, you can approve 25. And so that is when I notified Chair and Vice Chair that I needed to do that, but we were going to add it to the next board meeting. But I did send out the scope early on, right when I got it.
To the board.
To the whole board, right when I, right when I got it.
And so, and so just because I, I want to make sure that I'm clear. So because what you said was just a little bit of a correction from what you said before. When you first state, when you first said it, you said you asked us for permission and we gave it to you. So I just, for the sake of the record, because what I do not want is any insinuation that the Chair or the Vice Chair stepped out of bounds.
Okay, you did not.
Where she emailed us the scope of work?
Yes, I'm looking. And I was asking that, where it is.
My question, I guess, is, it's the difference between the 25,000 and what is now the contract. Are we just approving? To me, it's like a change order. That's, that's what it appears to me, is the change order that we are approving because now it's going over the 25,000. Correct me because I'm not quite sure.
Essentially, yes. I mean, a PO is issued for the 25,000, which is what the superintendent has authority to do without board approval. And so what you all are doing is essentially, it's kind of like a change order, but you're approving the full contract for up to 48,000. Yes.
So I have a motion, I have a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes eight to one. Next is our superintendent's update.
All right, I don't have any slides, but just to close out the year, we've got testing, as we know, happening this week, and all of our students, I'm sure, are doing an amazing job demonstrating what they need. Let's see what else I wrote down here. Next week is the last week of school, so we are looking forward to lots of celebrations and also all of our graduate, graduation ceremonies, which will, which will start next Wednesday and go throughout Friday, Friday evening. And so congratulations to all of our graduates. We look forward to seeing you walk across the stage. And thank you to all of our employees who do such an amazing job every day. Next week is our last week with students, so I hope they enjoy every minute. And then it'll be a short, a few days of post-planning and a wrap to the 24, 25 school year. So congratulations to everyone for, for an incredible, incredible job this year. Thank you.
Moving on to our consent agenda, we have three items to consider. Consider approval of the general personnel report. Consider approval of the March 25th, 2025 Board of Education Meeting Minutes. Consider approval of the April 8th, 2025 Board Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve all three consent agenda items? Do I have a second? So I have a motion by Board Member Brown Gaither, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Tuesday, May 27th, will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. Before we begin our public comments at the end, cable two viewers, thank you for watching. This will conclude our broadcast.